Being six thirty. Let's get started. Good evening. It is six thirty on July twenty third, two thousand twenty five, and I'm calling the meeting of the Chelmsford Planning Board to order. My name is Chris LaValli, and I am the Chair of the Board. Tonight, we'll be following the posted agenda, and the meeting tonight is both live in person and via Zoom. If Zoom fails at any point during the meeting, we'll try to get it back up and running, but if not, we will continue in person only. This meeting is being televised live and recorded via Chelmsford Telemedia and will be available on their website and on YouTube. So tonight, first thing, we have Michael with NIMCOG, and he will be presenting to us the Housing Production Plan from NIMCOG.
Great. Thanks, Chris.
Just give me a...
I have the PowerPoint up in the room. If you just tell me when to advance the slides, I can do it.
Yeah, that sounds good. All right. As most of you know, NIMCOG has been working, the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments has been working on updating the Housing Production Plan and working hand in hand with the Housing Advisory Board to produce the plan. So tonight, go to the next slide. What we're going to do is kind of give an overview of the plan, look at the findings from the needs assessment and our conclusions, look at the draft vision statement and goals for the plan, as well as implementation strategies, and also how they play into the action plan. And then we'll talk about next steps for the plan's approval. So the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments is the regional planning agency for the Lowell, the Greater Lowell Region and Pepperell. The agency was established in nineteen sixty-three. It's governed by an eighteen-member policy board with representatives from the nine municipalities, and the purpose is to increase municipal capacity, foster regional collaboration and coordination, and including providing local and regional technical planning services to immigrant communities. And that's what we're doing here tonight. So throughout the process, we had several in-person events, and we tied them in with the Creating Chelmsford Future Master Plan. So this plan feeds into the Town's Master Plan. We had a survey, several interviews with residents, the Chelmsford Housing Authorities? Sorry. And so what I'm about to present is kind of the findings from the outreach. There are basically eight key findings that we had, the first being that there are significant number of residents who make very low incomes and extremely low incomes, and their housing needs aren't being met. The homeownership is increasingly out of reach for the median income earner, which is the median income for the area is about one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So even people making that much money aren't finding sufficient housing stock. Renters fare significantly worse than owners when it comes to access to and cost of housing. The higher income levels often pay less than thirty percent of their income on housing and occupy housing that might be affordable to those who earn less. Chelmsford has a growing population that will need accessible housing, especially seniors and non-family households. Chelmsford has a growing need for smaller units suitable for individuals or small but growing families. There were racial disparities in mortgage approvals within Chelmsford, and that was only looking at one year's dataset, but still the Latino population was significantly lower in their approval ratings. And also, we found that the sewer and water infrastructure are near capacity, and that could have impacts on future development. So the vision statement for the plan is that Chelmsford is committed to building a vibrant, thriving community that fosters inclusive, diverse, and sustainable housing that meets the community and regional needs. Through strategic planning, private, public-private partner collaboration, thoughtful development, and equitable policies, the town will expand housing options, including affordable options where people of all income levels can live, work, and grow. So the HPP identifies five goals, the first being to expand affordable housing units, the availability to achieve production goals of creating an average of at least seventy-three SHI units every year. And that number comes from the state's Formula Four, zero point five percent of the 2020 housing stock. Goal number two is to monitor existing deed-restricted affordable housing and make sure that any of the subsidized housing inventory units don't lapse, and you're able to preserve the amount going forward. And that's important, too, because the town is now just over ten percent. Goal number three is to develop diversified housing options to affirmatively further fair housing across the community. Goal four is to preserve and invest in the existing housing stock. And goal five is to promote sustainable and efficient development format patterns. So that's a lot of it is looking at infill development and how we can keep the development away from areas, maybe, that are away from the amenities and services and kind of focus on the inner core. So we've also identified four major strategies to address the goals, to achieve the goals. The first strategy is to encourage and foster public and private partnerships to address the housing needs of vulnerable populations. A lot of this is kind of leaning on existing relationships and structures that the town has in place, along with the Chelmsford Housing Authority. Strategy two, improve land use regulations and streamline development review process. This is an effort that's gained a lot of popularity in recent years, especially when we're looking at more by-right development and trying to streamline the development process so it's not as time-consuming, and developers aren't turned off by the lengthy and costly development review process. Strategy three is to improve outreach to boards, residents, and committees on affordable housing opportunities and related services. This is something that we've heard a lot in our outreach, was that a lot of residents didn't know that certain programs were available, and also that the turnover, or potential turnover with the Chelmsford Housing Authority, trying to get the boards different educational opportunities and services. Strategy four is to utilize and promote the existing and identify new funding sources and regional programs to support residents in need and necessary infrastructure. So implementation strategy is one, we're going to go through, there are five action items, so we'll go through those actually on the next slide, because the next slide has the implementation matrix as part of it. So if we can go to the next slide. So to encourage and foster public and private partnerships to address the housing needs for the vulnerable populations. The first action items to actively partner and engage with developers on friendly forty B proposals and/or local zonal approvals to expand the supply of affordable and rental homeownership units through housing development that meets the desired attributes of affordable housing and other tools. So this is going to go to advance the goals one and three, the lead partners, and this would be the Community Development Director and the Housing Authority. This is an ongoing action, and the priority was a medium priority. The second was to continue to partner with the Chelmsford Housing Authority to create supportive housing options for a range of populations. This goes to advance all five goals, and the lead partners are the Town Manager, Community Development Director, the Housing Authority, and the Housing Advisory Board. This is also an ongoing action that has a high priority. The third strategy, or the third action, was to work with the community-based and regional nonprofit affordable developers. This would go to advance goals one, three, and five with the same lead partners as the previous, with a medium priority and a target completion of twenty twenty-nine. The fourth action would be to repurpose or surplus tax title lands to increase the supply of affordable housing. This goes to support goals one, three, four, and five with the Town Manager, Community Development Director, Housing Authority as the lead partners, and that's a low priority with the target completion at the end of the planning period of twenty thirty. The last action for the first strategy would be to expand housing options for seniors, people with disabilities, and veterans. This goes to advance goals one, three, four, and five with the Council on Aging, Planning Board, Community Development Director, and Housing Authority as the leads on this action. This is a high priority with the target completion of twenty twenty-eight. So the second strategy, we can skip right to the implementation matrix. This is to improve land use regulations and streamline development review process. The first action would be to assess the town's inclusionary zoning bylaw to review applicability and incentives for more targeted affordable units and new developments. This would go to advance goals one, three, five, with the lead partners being the Planning Board and Community Development Director. It's a low priority with a target completion of twenty twenty-eight, and I think it's considered a low priority because of it was a recently adopted inclusionary zoning bylaw that seems to be having some positive impact. The second action would be to modernize the zoning bylaw, including adjusting dimensional and use standards to support mixed-use opportunities within neighborhood centers and missing middle opportunities near neighborhood centers or other appropriate areas. Again, it goes to advance goals one, three, four, and five, with the Planning Board being the lead partner on that, with a medium priority and a target completion of twenty twenty-eight. Amend, the next action would be to amend overlay districts and bylaw to ensure clarity. The zoning map has some areas that have overlapping overlays, which can sometimes lead to some confusion for the developers or users of the bylaw. So that would go to advance goals one, three, and five, with the Planning Board being the lead partner, that being a low priority. The next action would be to encourage the creation of accessory dwelling units to provide smaller, more affordable options and evaluate the progress in implementing, to implementation to identify ways to strengthen the bylaw. This goes to advance goals one, three, four, and five, with the lead partners being the Planning Board, Housing Advisory Board, and Community Development Director, with a target completion in twenty twenty-nine. Encourage housing near public transit, job centers, and services. This goes to advance goals one, three, four, and five, with the Housing Advisory Board and the Planning Board being the lead partners, and that's a high priority, excuse me, with a target of twenty twenty-eight completion. The next action is to incentivize infill development, which may include evaluating and amending minimum lot sizes and other tools to encourage this type of development. This would go to advance goals one, three, four, and five, with the lead partners being the Planning Board and the Community Development Director. This is a medium priority with the target completion of twenty twenty-nine. The last action for strategy two is to create design guidelines to allow more by-right development through a tiered site plan review process to support the creation of multifamily housing, senior housing, and workforce housing through zoning bylaw amendments and design guidelines. This would go to advance goals one, three, and five, with the Community Development Director, Planning Board, and have being the lead partners. That was given a medium priority with the target completion of twenty thirty. Okay. All right. So implementation, sorry, general strategy three was to improve communication and education to residents' boards and committees on affordable housing opportunities and related services. The first action is to increase awareness of current housing options and support the development of new zoning bylaws for options for people to agent community through regular communications, including informational forums and targeted engagement, as well as new bylaws. This would go to advance goals one, three, four, and five, with the lead partners being the Council on Aging, the Housing Advisory Board, and the Planning Board, with a medium priority to complete by twenty twenty-six. The second action would be to educate Chelmsford residents about local options to help seniors remain in their homes, including tax deferrals for the existing homes, home modification programs to make their homes more accessible, and other initiatives. This would advance goals one, three, four, and five, again, with Council on Aging and the Council on Disabilities being the lead partners. That was given a high priority with the target completion of twenty twenty-six. The third action item for this strategy is to promote and support the creation of accessory dwelling units. That goes to advance the same goals with the HAB, Community Development Director, Planning Board, being the lead partners with a priority, a medium priority, and a target completion of twenty twenty-six. The final strategy for, action for strategy three was to provide training and technical assistance to the Planning Board and Housing Advisory Boards for housing-related issues. That would go to advance all five goals with the Town Manager, Community Development Director, and Chelmsford Housing Authority as the lead partners. That was given a high priority with target completion of twenty twenty-five. All right. So the last strategy would be to identify new funding sources and regional programs to support residents in need and necessary infrastructure. The first action would be to identify programs and incentives to assist seniors who wish to agent community. That goes to advance goals one, three, four, and five, with the Council on Aging being the lead partner with a medium priority for completion by twenty twenty-six. The second action would be to maintain the standardized housing inventory, keep all regulatory agreements, deed restrictions, home and rental prices, and other data units, and other unit data. That goes to advance goals one, two, and four, with the Community Development Director being the lead on that action with a medium priority targeted for twenty twenty-seven completion. The third action would be to preserve and improve existing housing stock through utilizing Community Preservation Act's funding and leverage home modification loan program, loan funds through community teamwork and other resources to assist property owners who make lower incomes with home repairs and target neighborhoods with aging housing stock for revitalization and potential conversion options. This was to advance goals one, three, four, and five, with the Community Preservation Committee, the Community Development Director, and HAB being the lead partners with a medium priority for twenty thirty completion. The fourth action for this strategy is to address infrastructure capacity relating to sewer and water. This is a high priority that's been ongoing, and the lead partners are the Public Works and the Town Manager. Participate in advance at Home in Greater Lowell, the regional housing strategy. This goes to support all five goals with the Community Development Director, Housing Advisory Board, Planning Board, the lead partners, and that's a high priority that is ongoing. All right. So now that we've gone through kind of the implementation matrix, I'll stop and take any questions if anyone has any questions before we talk about next steps.
Yeah, Mike, can we go back to the first strategy? Action plan?
Yep.
Okay. So the one that has the Planning Board is the last one? Is that right? Yes. So expand housing options for seniors, people with disabilities and veterans. So one of the things that I had a question about, I read, I sort of skimmed through the Housing Production Plan, and I was trying to understand what problems that it was actually trying to solve. So the one problem that it was trying to solve, which I think was pretty clear, was that you want to be able to maintain a certain level of generating SHI each year so that you could, if at a point that we fall under ten percent, that we could use the other means of obtaining safe harbor. So it seemed to me that that is a definite goal that we want to accomplish, is to make sure that at the time that we need to have it, we are generating the appropriate number of SHI for that purpose. Okay, so I understand that. But then the general housing production issues, which seem to center around, one, seniors that are in larger, more expensive homes than they need to be or want to be, that, and this was expressed a couple of town meetings ago, I think, by one of the town meeting reps, that she wanted to, she said she wanted to move to something that was smaller, but that there wasn't anything that was smaller and affordable within Chelmsford. So I assume that issue is also an issue that we're looking at, but that doesn't necessarily have to do with affordable. Am I correct about that?
It isn't a direct correlation between the SHI inventory, but there are ways to create naturally affordable housing and...
Okay. So in other words, yeah, in other words, so we're talking about affordable in a more general sense, not in the specific legal sense of forty B, which is subsidized housing.
Yeah, I guess we're talking more lowercase affordable.
Okay, lowercase A, that's a good way to put it. Okay. So that would be one thing, then, that would be of interest is, is what can be done to do that? And so I understand that this one is expand housing options for seniors. That potentially would be one thing that we would be looking to do under that? Is, okay. Okay. And then another one seemed to be that there, that in general, the difference between the housing prices and/or the cost of housing and the median income associated with people in Chelmsford. And so then there also what we're looking for is to see how we could motivate housing that wasn't as expensive. And again, small A affordable, as well as capital A affordable. Okay.
Yep. Yeah. And when we did the needs assessment, we looked at cost-burdened residents, and even though they might not be low-income, they were, but as you get lower in the income, you're seeing more and more people spending way more than the thirty percent of their income on housing. So that's one way to increasing the supply for smaller homes could have kind of a ripple effect.
Okay. Could we go to the second strategy, the action items for that? Because that was the one that seemed to focus primarily on the Planning Board.
Yeah.
And so I was wondering if we could talk a little bit in more detail about what those are. So assess the town's inclusionary zoning bylaw. So you said that was low priority because we have one in place, and we might want to just buff it up or whatever. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's more to look back. And there's one, too, for the accessory dwelling units, is to kind of monitor, especially the time period as the bylaw goes into effect, seeing if there are ways to improve it, or, you know, making sure it's working the way it's intended.
Okay. Is the ADU one in this one, or is it?
It is both.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Because, because I mean, this board was not super excited about the ADU idea. So, you know, if we're going to endorse this plan, the fact that it's stating that we're going to try to promote the use of ADUs when we were actually not in favor of that would, to me, be an issue that we need to resolve before we could endorse it. But I just wanted to walk through the rest of these. So modernize the zoning bylaw, include adjusting dimensional and use to support mixed-use opportunities. Okay. So these are things that this board is already wanting to do, to look at mixed use in commercial areas, I think, primarily.
Yeah. And we are looking at that now with the, NIMCOG is also working on the Center Village Plan and looking at doing a zoning and land use analysis on a lot of parcels in those areas.
Okay, great. And then also the missing middle opportunity. So again, that would be not just capital A, but small A, affordable kinds of things.
Yeah, it could be both, but trying to focus on the like four to twelve unit developments, rather than, you know, two hundred unit developments.
Okay.
Or villages of small, tiny houses or something.
Right, right.
Yeah. Yeah. Cottage courts.
Right. Okay. Okay, great. And then approved overlay, sorry, I don't have my...
Amend overlay.
Amend overlay districts and bylaw to ensure clarity. So what was, what's the goal there?
I think looking at areas where there may be overlapping overlays and trying to maybe simplify where we could make it a little bit more clear as to, when, as if a developer or... Um, it, when, uh, as if a developer come or, um, or landowner comes in and they look at. At the, the zoning map and see, you know, all these, all these overlays kind of on, on top of their, their parcel. That there may be some confusion as to, you know, what you can truly do with the, the, um. The area, and it also may, may cause some issues with if, kind of the overall, um. Feel of the zone, so trying, trying to make sure there aren't any conflicting areas, um, and, and trying to maybe simplify it a little bit, little bit more.
Are, Evan, are you? Is this from you?
No.
Okay.
We have two overlays, um. I agree that SEOD has created confusion and always will be confusing for stakeholders that are trying to figure it out. Once they call, we walk them through it, it's pretty clear. Um, as you can see, it's a low priority, um.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think the board has identified this as a priority. Um, I think the board has identified cleaning up the zoning bylaw, um, which, which this speaks to.
Okay.
Uh, but I don't, I don't view the overlays as creating confusion.
Okay.
I think the board's on the right track with, with your.
Okay, yeah, I mean, my main concern was that there's an issue being expressed about lack of clarity and unless somebody can specifically articulate.
Yeah, any, any, anytime there's overlays in any community, they create confusion.
Pretty accurate.
Okay, okay, so we'll let that one go. Uh, so I'm going to skip the next couple, incentivize, um, infill development. Which may include evaluating and, uh. Lot sizes and other, so what did, what is that one about?
Uh, that potentially, um, having, having in- incentives that the planning board can use through, um. The site plan or special permit process where they can, um, you, I think you do it with, um, in this, the. Um, Center Village District where there's a, um, a parking, um, reduction that you can grant. Um, in certain areas, maybe it's. Uh, maybe it's extra units if they, they kind of like how, um, inclusive zoning works, so, you know, where you can get maybe more. Um, more units if they're affordable or if they're a certain, certain. Um, type that you're, that you're looking for.
Okay. And then the create design guidelines and allow more by right development.
Yep, um, and, and that was, you know, with, with. Kind of in MBTA communities, there, there was a push for the, um, more by right development and you, you hear it all. That's kind of how, um, zoning reform is, has been going, um. In the local, locally and nationally, um, and trying to get more. Um, with the, with the design guidelines, giving, um, the developers. Kind of upfront what you're, you're looking for in the, the design, um, so that, so they can. Gives it more, um, prescribed, um. Design guide and. It allows, it allows for the developers to have, have a little bit more clarity as to what, what's, um. What the town's looking for and assurance that if they provide the town what they're looking for, they're, they're going to receive their approvals.
Okay, how do we, how do we do that?
So, once. There's multiple steps here, but the, the theme as I understand is the board wants to go back into SEOD. Um, and refine housing opportunities.
Right.
Uh, targeting missing middle, smaller, smaller scale development, smaller units. That's infill development, that's redevelopment. If the board truly wanted to embrace by right, such as MBTA zoning. One way of creating predictability on the architecture is to create design guidelines, it's form based zoning basically.
Okay, okay.
If you Google form based zoning, it's a.
Which we kind of started to look at with MBTA, right?
Yeah, and so it's, you're basically pre approving architectural styles that you prefer. And then if a developer builds it, that will, that would support the board's ability to do by right. Multi-family housing.
Okay, okay.
So like we would be driving what we want by incentivizing it in some way within the zoning or the site plan provisions by right, correct?
Right, yeah, and I think we've earned this.
Well, I assume the incentive is that it's by right, is that the incentive?
Correct, but in exchange for, in exchange for this three or four options of architectural styles based upon missing middle housing.
Right, as a, as opposed to having a permit where we evaluate it and we say what we like or don't like, what we're saying is, okay, these are the choices, here's the menu.
Exactly.
By right, if you choose from the menu, we're okay with it, okay.
But having just guide, guidelines in general for what's preferred overall, whether, whether it's addressing. Multi-families or, or missing middle, wouldn't that be a good idea? So, developers know.
Yeah, I think so.
Because I tend to, I don't know, every time something comes up here, I'm like, okay, that's great, but I don't like, like, the look of it.
Yeah.
Like, wouldn't that be just something we should maybe put on just to kind of, not to be by right, but just kind of like, you know, what do we want in this town?
But I mean, if we're specifically trying to drive the missing middle or, or cottage villages or something, we, I mean. One way to do that, I mean, specific to this housing production plan, I mean, basically the housing number. Grows every year and a lot of people are unhappy at the large box structures. Including people on this board, and so if we want to drive away from the large box. Structures, it seems like we, it's a little bit of a roadmap here to do that.
Well, I mean, one, I mean, one question, this question that I had in reading the, the plan, Mike, was. That it seemed like a, a lot of this was oriented towards creating housing that doesn't exist now, so it's center generating housing. But the forecast of the census was that essentially Chelmsford's population is going to stabilize. And so then my question is, are we, how does that compute that we're generating more housing? But that we don't have a corresponding population increase to go with it?
Yeah, good question, I, I, there are, the projections do have, have, um, Chelmsford going up. Over the next 20 years by another, uh, 112% before it levels out, um, around 2040, 2050. It, it, the, the, I think that you have to look at a couple, couple issues with. You have, uh, it, some neighborhoods have an aging housing stock, um, so there are going to be, there are going to be, um. You know, how, housing that's redeveloped, um. Um, and, and there's also, um. The amount of, um, residents, the amount of house, the household numbers are going, have been steadily going down, so. Even though you have, you have the kind of similar amount of, um, residents, you, you have less. People living in, in the units, so you actually would need, if the trend keeps going, you're going to need more. Even if the population stays the same, you're going to need more housing to support less people in, in the units.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
And, and because the, the households, household sizes are, are shrinking, um. That would also correlate with the need for smaller, um, units.
Right, okay.
This is an important discussion, but we do have a lot of other stuff to get to tonight, um, can we cover the next steps?
Yeah, yeah, and that, that's pretty, um, quick, cuz, um, we, I met, um, yesterday with the Housing Advisory Board and, um. They, they recommended the, uh, they gave a, um. Kind of a recommended, um, approval for the, the, the plan, um. The next step would be going to, uh, the, uh, the Select Board in August to get their, um, their blessing and then. We would send it to, um, the state for their approval, hopefully by the end of August.
Is, is there a deadline for this?
Um, there isn't a deadline, um. But, yeah, the, you don't have a, a housing production plan that's in effect right now, so, um.
Okay, cuz I've got, I've got a lot more questions, I think other members of the board do as well. I think Joel's point about the ADU piece is important, um.
I.
I also have a question about if ADUs are by right and state mandated by right. How else would we encourage it as a zoning board? Um, that's just one of my many questions, um. And so I would like to continue this discussion, um, at the next meeting, probably for another half hour.
Do board members want to send questions prior to that meeting?
That'd probably be a good idea.
Well, I personally have a, a problem supporting any increase in housing until I, till this town gets a new school. I'm not adding more.
That's, that's one of my other concerns is that we, the, the goals are nice. The action plan is very prescriptive and doesn't take into account the managed growth strategy that we're about to undertake. And so one of the concerns is I have, we seem to be putting the cart before the horse. And one of my recommendations would be to put in a very big caveat in this plan. That this will be revisited after that managed growth strategy is in place and approved. To revisit and potentially change any or all of these, uh, goals and action plans, because. What we decide in that managed growth strategy may be counter to some of this stuff. And so I wouldn't want to endorse this as a long-term plan that is counter to what we might come up with in the managed growth strategy. So. If. If people maybe could send me and Evan and Mike their concerns and questions. We can have something pulled together and maybe address some of those, um. A little bit more expeditiously in the next meeting, um.
Mike, can you, um, summarize for us what the, just briefly if you don't mind, what? And you kind of did at the beginning, but why it is that we are in need of a housing production plan? In the eyes of the state and what that enable, how does that benefit us to have one?
Yeah, yeah, um, well, it, it helps with the, um, obtaining safe harbor, uh, we started the, the project, you, the town was under. Uh, the, the mandated 10%. Um, you know, since, since then, Chelmsford is, is just above the, uh, I think it's at 10.02% now, so. Um. Yeah. The town does have, have that, um, but if we were, if the town were to be under, um, the 10%, then. Um, having an approved plan, um, help it, it will give you safe, safe harbor.
And Evan, you kind of articulated it a little differently yesterday.
Yeah, I mean, for purposes of 40B, the town, um, is likely safe until, uh, 2032. When the next census is issued, uh, but we're barely over and as we know, units, over the next 10 years, units can fall off. Uh, the other, uh, benefit, um, is that, um, state grant programs. Uh, use the production, uh, metrics for bonus points. Uh, I'm not suggesting that, that the town's going to, uh, produce 73 units per year. Uh, but it is a question that's on all the state grant applications, having a plant production plan is also, uh, bonus points. Um, and then obviously having a detailed, uh, local affordable housing plan or housing plan, uh, is beneficial. The timing is not really critical like it once was, uh, cuz we're not, we're not chasing 10% at this point. Um. You know, so coordinating, we're trying to coordinate with the, uh, growth management strategy is logical. Um, maybe, maybe some of the themes in this get adjusted or, 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 you know, tuned down a little bit. Uh, but what you, what you need to, what you need to keep in mind is, this is a regulatory document that has 40B fingerprints on it.
Right.
And what many communities do such as Chelmsford is, they take it, they use it as an opportunity, as Joel was saying. To, um, articulate their local housing preferences, needs and desires. We're in that position, we don't necessarily need to speak directly to the 40B, um, production, cuz we have achieved that. So, that's how I would look at this plan, is what is, what is the town's local housing needs and what is our roadmap and strategies, uh, to achieve that?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that the capital A part of this plan, we would keep regardless of the managed growth strategy. I think it's pretty clear that would be a high priority for this town. Uh, it's the small A is what's in flux based on what the management, in particular also the list of properties at the end. Because some of those properties, we may end up saying, well, I'd rather that be commercial developed, commercially developed rather than residential, so. Those are the things that I think would be more a function of outcome of that.
How to continue this for the 13th?
Yep.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. Next on the agenda is new public hearing for 191, 195 Riverneck Road. Hey Doug.
Good evening, um, this is Chairman, members of the board, uh, for the record Douglas Duchaine. Uh, with Fineran and Nicholson representing Commonwealth Construction and Utilities Company. Um, what I'd like to do is do some introductions and, and just a quick overview. And then I'm going to turn things over to my client, who would like to introduce himself and his family and the company. Uh, and then we'll turn things over to our engineers and architects to go through the meat and potatoes of the project. So, as I said, Doug Duchaine with Fineran and Nicholson, um, with me this evening, Katie Enright and Casey Ferrera from Howard Stein Hudson. Also Ken File from LYF Architects, um, as well as Chris, um, DiStefano, uh, AJ DiStefano, and is Bill here? And, uh, Mr. DiStefano, Bill, uh, Dad is, uh, here with us as well. Um, my clients are seeking to construct, uh, two buildings on the property at 191, 195 Riverneck Road. Uh, the first building, um, is a 14 bay contractors building, um, it is just under 30,000 square feet of gross. Uh, square footage, um, it's got a footprint of about 23,000 square foot, it's a two-story building. And then we have a secondary building behind that one, uh, which is 8,400, um, and four gross square feet. So, um, those two buildings, the uses proposed in them are by right uses. Um, however, we are proposing to include a contractor's yard. On the property, which requires us to obtain a special permit for the use. In addition to the site plan review, the aquifer protection and a major business complex, a special permit. Uh, again, the site is located at 191, 195 Riverneck Road, I know the board is, uh, familiar with the site. Uh, it does contain, uh, 233,000 plus square feet of area, so we're talking at, uh, 5.4 acres in size. And again, it is located in the IA zoning district. Um, before I turn things over to Chris, um, I'd just like to remind the board that we did come in. Uh, on a preliminary meeting with you guys, and, and, um, went through the proposal. Uh, you were kind enough to provide us a significant amount of commentary and questions and comments and suggestions, um. I want to tell you that those comments were not lost on us, we did in fact go back to the drawing board and try and integrate as many of them. As possible and to address your concerns to the extent possible. Uh, but moreover, um, my clients actually set up a neighbor meeting. And we not only notified abutters within fi- fi- uh, 300 square feet, which would be your typical abutters. Uh, we went 1,500 square feet out from the property line so that we would integrate all of the residential structures. You know, that are not necessarily within 300 feet of abutters, but let's say within, you know, their neighbors, so to speak. So, it was an extensive area that we invited, uh, we held the meeting at the, the Chelmsford Police were kind enough to let us use their room. And, uh, we had a pretty good show, uh, turnout of neighbors and, and abutters, um. And, um, I, I think, uh, we presented the project to them and then had an open forum, as you know, we do. Um, and, 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 you know, the neighbors were quite vocal, they gave us. They gave us, too, a lot of questions. They raised a lot of concerns and they provided their thoughts of, of what things should do or how we might be able to address their concerns. So at the end of that meeting, we actually collected emails and we, we had a little email chain going so that we could, you know, continue with the neighbors. And in fact, my clients and their engineers put together a, an entire informational booklet that, you know, gave all the information about the company, what it did, where it did it, pictures of our equipment, so people could see what equipment would be stored on site and where. It was quite comprehensive. We sent it out to all the abutters that, that wanted it. And we, I, we got back very few additional comments after that, other than a couple of the neighbors that, you know, thanked us and had some minus comments. But again, my clients have tried to be very cooperative in working with the neighbors and have tried to integrate as many of their questions as we could and address as many concerns as possible. As you know, you can never answer them all. But, you know, I think my clients have done a great job. So as you'll hear when you get the presentation of the process. So with that, I'd like to introduce Chris. Just wants to come up, say a few words, introduce himself, and then we'll turn things over to our technical folks for a presentation on the plan.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening, Members of the Board. My name is Chris DiStefano, and I'm one of the owners of Commonwealth Construction and Utilities, which is a family-owned business. Our company specializes in water and sewer infrastructure, performing utility work for municipalities across the Commonwealth, along with working for private property owners. We are currently based out of 15 Progress Ave, a property that has been in the family since 2001. In fact, our, our family has maintained ties to the Chelmsford community since 1979. As our, as our business has grown, we have outgrown our existing location and are now seeking to expand while remaining here in Chelmsford. In early 2024, we identified a property on Riverneck Road that appears to meet our needs in both zoning and available space, offering more land than we currently occupy. I thank you for your time and your consideration, and I'll turn this over to Katie Enright.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Katie Enright, the project engineer with Howard Stein Hudson. Just to sort of set the stage, we realize this is the very first meeting of the night. I know I talked this way a couple of weeks ago when we were here with a different application. We understand that traffic is a very big concern for the community. We've done a pretty significant traffic study. I'll touch on it a little bit later. We realize this is the first meeting. In no way do we think this is the last meeting. So I'd like to do an overview certainly as to the project and how things have changed since we were here, how the project has been developed. Certainly, if the board would like a peer review of the traffic study, we'd, we'd like the board to decide that tonight so that maybe we could come back and do essentially an entire evening of traffic, if that makes sense, at a, a meeting later on down the road, and answer any additional questions, certainly at upcoming meetings. We also do not have our peer review from the, from the DPW in Chelmsford as of yet. They're working to try to have it done for the August meeting. So we understand that that back and forth has still not happened either. Again, to continue until we can have that back and forth with the engineering department related to stormwater on site. So as Doug mentioned, the site is 191 and 195 Riverneck Road. It's a little under four point, or 5.4 acres. When we were here, informally, months ago, we had proposed a different layout than the layout you see before you today. Essentially where the house exists adjacent on that little, sort of the little parcel that's in front of the office buildings off to the side, we had proposed an additional contractor's structure, breaking it up into actually three structures on that initial plan. That building was a little bit closer to the road than the main building that we're showing on this plan. And we heard from the board that that wasn't something that was liked, that it was, that it was close to the road, that having that separate building where that house is currently on the site. So we've since removed that and changed the layout of the project related to the removal of that building. So that lot where the single-family house sits today is essentially meant to be grading and landscaping now to buffer the use of this contractor's yard from the abutters in that direction. And you can see there's significant landscaping that we've proposed along the frontage and the side of that parcel. The entrance to the site has been designed to be right across the street from an existing business, is an engineering business across the street, and therefore the headlights coming out of the site would face a business use coming in and out of the site. The building itself is set back well, well more than 40 feet. It's almost 90 feet from the street, 40 feet being the requirement under IA zoning. The building is almost 90 feet back from the street. And you'll see that the parking that we have along the building all faces away from the street. So again, cars pulling in would face the proposed building. There's no parking that faces Riverneck Road along the frontage. What we're also proposing relative to grade there is to bring that area up, the front of the building level with Riverneck Road. So the building itself is about the same elevation as Riverneck Road along the front. And the building along the front, and Ken will speak a little bit more to the architecture, appears to be one-story. So as you drive down Riverneck Road, we've paid special attention to the front of this building and the visual you could have on the front of this building and the sides of the building as you approach on Riverneck Road from either direction to blend more with some of the businesses, industrial, office, residential, that you see along Riverneck Road, and really keep that profile of that building very low. We also have significant landscaping that we've proposed along the front of the building, essentially in that large buffer that we have between us and that parking aisle. That floor, as you come into the site, would be a mezzanine office. Essentially, it would feel, if you were to go around the back of the building, it would feel like a second floor, but you'd walk right into it on the first floor. So an office assistant, anyone who works in the office may work up in the mezzanine area, which would appear like you would be walking into the first floor of a business from the street. As you go down below the building to the back, you're sinking down 10 feet below Riverneck Road. And so the back is significantly lower than the elevation of Riverneck Road, and that's where you would see the back of house. So we'd have overhead doors. Again, Ken will show you the profile there, but all of that back of house essentially faces out towards the highway to the back of the project site and is invisible from Riverneck Road. There's a man door, garage door in the back. And then we also have 14 separate storage bays along the back parking lot, which is more than 100, it's almost 200 feet essentially from Riverneck Road, where those businesses, a plumber, carpenter, essentially anything on the use chart that would be allowed in the IA district would be allowed to store, say, pallets and materials, et cetera. And anything that's there, if it rains, would be collected in our stormwater management system, which is also pretty extensive, which I'm going to have Casey talk to you about in a little bit. The Commonwealth Utilities Building is that building all the way at the back. It's, it's more than 200 feet from Riverneck Road. And the first floor of that building is, is again, 10 feet below Riverneck Road, so essentially invisible from the street. Because if you are at the street, you'd have to look up over that front building to see that back building. It's two stories, again, with office, and there's garage bays. And those face to either side lot line at that back building. So you'll see that that's significantly back from the road. And then Commonwealth Utilities has a parking lot associated with their office and internal use. And then the equipment storage is set all the way at the back of the site, adjacent to the highway ramp. There's vehicle storage back here for different types of machinery that they have. We'll provide the planning board with the letter. We apologize, we didn't provide the planning board with the letter. We sent to the abutters. But it was very educational as far as what it means and what different types of equipment looked like, how large they are, and where they would sit on the site if they were to be at the site. Certainly a significant amount of their machinery, they have 25 different pieces of equipment, are not meant to be on site. But you can see where we have those positioned, again, hundreds of feet from Riverneck Road and behind that front building and adjacent to the business at the back. Again, the site then slopes all the way down to the ramp area in the back. And what we've done is we've had, and we'll provide this on a, on a plan, we had the surveyors go out and locate every tree within that buffer zone between us, the mature trees between us and the ramp there. So there's 35 feet now that we've left of existing vegetation, and we're going to show those trees on a future plan so that you can see where those sit. And that's to protect, again, the area from noise that we heard from, from the highway ramps there to aid in that. Site circulation, you can get all the way around this site with a fire truck. That hasn't changed since the previous plan was before you. And the area at the rear is entirely fenced so that everything essentially within that area as far as storage and equipment is secure. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Casey before I come back up and just touch on a couple of the other plan sheets and let him speak to you a little bit about our stormwater system and utility connections.
Good evening to the board. For the record, Casey Ferreira with Howard Stein Hudson. So as you have probably heard, the existing site for the, the 191 parcel is currently undeveloped, exists vegetated with woods and undergrowth. 195 currently exists as a single-family house. So in combination between the two, the site, 195, 191, 195 Riverneck Road currently has about 5,962 square feet of impervious. Comparably to the, the proposal in front of you, the proposal for the contractor's yard shows 135,013 square feet of impervious with 20,717 square foot of gravel. Now, for purposes of stormwater standards, recharge requirements, TSS and phosphorus, we have considered the gravel as an impervious surface for the calculations, just to be conservative, because gravel is going to deflect water in a very similar way that impervious surface would. So that totals realistically what we use in our calculations, 155,730 square feet of impervious area. Now, that, to mass stormwater standards and local regulations, that is clearly a new development. So we fall under all new development regulations, both locally and with the state. So what that does locally is that changes our TSS requirement from 80% to 90%, and it changes phosphorus from 50% to 60%. Additionally, the use, based on conversations with DPW in the past, qualifies us as a fleet storage use as well, just due to the number of vehicles. A fleet storage is considered a land use with higher potential pollutant loads, and that triggers standard five of the Mass State Stormwater Standards. Additionally, we also are within the aquifer protection district on top of Zone 2 wellhead, so that triggers standard six, critical areas, discharge to critical areas. Now, standard five and standard six are both fairly similar. The main requirement between the two is that you are required to pretreat stormwater to 44% prior to infiltration. As you, if you read the report, standard four details achieving 97% removal prior to infiltration. And then we also did not include the, the treatment that would come from the infiltration. So basically what you're seeing is a 97% pretreatment prior to that infiltration, meaning both the requirements of standard five and standard six. Standard five, as a loophole, further requires hydrocarbon interception where land would be susceptible to hydrocarbons, so that's oil. So what we fitted all the catch basins with, at least in the areas where trucks and maneuvering will be happening, they all have oil booms within those catch basins. So that, the intention there is if there is some kind of spill, if there is some kind of leak or something from, from either larger vehicles, work vehicles, or what have you, these catch basins are protected. And further, the stormwater train that is attached to those catch basins is also protected all the way down the line to further protect the aquifer, the aquifer below. That's the... So the phosphorus requirements for the town are 60%. And that is a volume-based requirement. To show that we meet 60% phosphorus, we have to show that we are infiltrating a certain volume of water per square foot of impervious. So in our calculations in the report, you'll see that we break it up per infiltration structure. But just for the sake of this meeting, the total requirement of infiltration to meet 60% phosphorus is 10,004 cubic feet. Our total provided across three infiltration areas is 36,762 cubic feet. So yes, we break it up per the requirement for each infiltration area, but just as a whole, we are more than triple the cubic footage required of volume. Briefly, I'll just explain how the drainage is broken up. So really, we look at this in thirds. So the front half, or the, the front of the building adjacent to Riverneck Road, we're collecting all that pavement and sitting into one MC7200 subsurface infiltration system. So there's going to be one system in the front that takes care of all the impervious that results as a, that's a result of that parking lot out front. Behind the first building, in that larger pavement area that has, you know, access to the garage doors at the back, and then also the, the storage areas themselves, we have a much larger footprint area of a subsurface chamber. And that's going to take a majority of the middle and some of the rear of the parking, but also the roofs from both buildings. And lastly, the very rear, under the gravel area, we also have a MC3500 system. And so just to give you an idea on size, the front system is about 5,500 cubic feet of storage. The middle system, even though it's a smaller chamber, but a much larger footprint, is about 13,500 cubic feet. And then the rear system, which is a larger chamber and also a larger footprint, has 17,700 cubic feet. So there's significant areas of infiltration on this site. In compliance with regulations, we have also done witness soil testing on April 8th of this year. DPW witnessed it. I went up there myself. We dug 10, 10 or 11 test pits out there just to gauge information as far as soil textures, groundwater elevations, so on and so forth. So that, I believe, covers the, the drainage aspects. Again, there's, you know, the 10 standards are all detailed in the report, and we can go over any ones that you might have questions for. But I do want to briefly just go over the utilities. For a development of this, of this use, they're, they're pretty standard. So what we show currently is a subsurface electrical line in line with, you know, the town's preferences and requirements. It's just underground. It's going to go to a transformer. That transformer is then going to feed the two buildings. And, you know, further, as, as we move into architecture and, and MEP design, we'll figure out where all those meter locations are going to be. But for now, we're just showing that we're feeding both buildings underground with electrical. The water is going to come off through the site driveway, right off Riverneck Road. The front building has a six-inch line in for a fire suppression, and each unit is fed a domestic line as well. That wraps to the back building, which also is fed with a sprinkler system line and then also a domestic line. There are fire hydrants on site that are also using six-inch waters coming off that. I have been in contact with the East Water Department, who says you'll have no problem servicing the site with the intended usage. Gas, similar, is going to come through the, the site driveway, obviously subsurface, and each unit will be fitted with a gas service. Gas and electric will obviously be worked out with National Grid once we move on to a preliminary construction phase, if we get there. National Grid will dictate really the layout and how they want it to be connected. And lastly, we have the sewer connections. So the existing site, so the existing building at 195 has a sewer connection for the house. The existing property at 191 has two existing sewer stubs, one for the property at 191, and those previously a property, I believe it was 185. So there's actually two sewer stubs available for the 191 property now, plus the one for the 195. So that gives us three sewer stubs with the, what do they call it now? The sewer policy that the DPW has, we're allowed an increase per stub of 500 gallons per day, in addition to what the existing house uses. For conservatism, we're just going with, we'll be within the 1,500 gallons that the three sewer stubs will give us of increases. Per Title V, that'll allot us at 15 gallons per day per employee, that'll allot us an availability to have 100 employees on this site as a whole, not just to meet the sewer policy there. One thing that will be connected to sewer on these plans, each of these garage bays is going to have a interior floor drain. Those interior floor drains will connect to a Those interior floor drains will connect to a gas oil interceptor prior to being discharged to the sanitary sewer. So all, all vehicle maintenance that may occur within the building, and it's not allowed on the outside of the building, but all vehicle maintenance that may occur within the inside of the building will be discharged through an interior floor drain, go to the interceptor, and then be discharged to the sewer. Now, since the back of the site is so much lower than the front of the site, we do have to have all sewer gravity to a pump station, and then that pump station will flow to the front of the building, hit a manhole, which is going to be constructed on top of one of the existing stubs, so we don't have to go into Riverneck Road to achieve the sewer. And with that, I believe I'll turn it back over to Katie. I think I covered all the bases that I wanted to. Actually, one additional item that I did have on the stormwater, also in compliance with standard five and standard six, we did provide a long-term pollution prevention plan with an operation and maintenance plan, so that is also within the package that you received on the design documents. Thank you.
And just to clarify that, too, Casey found sand in all of our test pits out there, so we have a really great infiltration rate, and we have more than two feet of separation in all of our infiltration systems, based on estimated seasonal high groundwater out there, too. So you can see all of the test pit locations and the testing information for the soil profiles on the grading and drainage sheets. Moving into landscaping, we have a pretty significant landscape plan before you. We concentrated a lot of the landscaping along the front property line, and then certainly looked at preserving as many trees as possible along the back line. So in total, we have 34 trees, 29 evergreens, and 220 shrubs. 20 of those shade trees are proposed along the site frontage. So we're looking at significantly landscaping the frontage of the property and the sides as it relates to Riverneck Road, and then you can see we have some landscaping down the side property lines, and then we're looking to maintain the tree cover at the rear. I also wanted to just touch briefly on our lighting plan. So you have a photometric plan also in your package that shows how the light will essentially light up the property. You can see that we were very sensitive, again, to the neighbors and made sure that all of our lights essentially face inward or away from Riverneck Road and away from the abutting properties and just light up the site directly. They're dark sky compliant lighting and also full cutoff. So we're using 20-foot poles throughout the site and then a 13-foot wall pack for the areas, or 13-foot height for those that are attached to the building around. I'm going to touch just really briefly on traffic tonight. We did do a pretty comprehensive traffic study. Again, we met with your planner, Evan Belansky, and also DPW to discuss where we would study for this site. We studied the site driveway at Riverneck. We studied Rivernet at Billrica Road, Billrica, Golden Cove, and Turnpike intersection, and then Riverneck and the Carlisle Road intersection. We also looked at not only the ITE, or the Institute of Traffic Engineers, count for use like this, but we also wanted to make sure, and we heard the board, count something similar. So we counted the Commonwealth operation at 15 progress, and we also counted West Tech Park in Tingsborough. If you've been to West Tech Park, it's set up very similar to this, although much larger. As you drive up the site driveway, you can see the buildings look like one story. You can go around back and see that there are two stories filled with a contractor-type use. We checked use tables versus the IA district versus what's in West Tech Park and came up with a similar user pattern, which is why we also counted that. But at the end of the day, ITE was way more conservative and way more than the traffic we counted at both of those operations. So our traffic study uses those conservative numbers. Just as a, an example, we had in our weekly AM peak and PM peak, we had 51 in and 18 out. 15 progress had 14 in, 15 out. So it's pretty significantly more what we're using in our traffic study. Again, just to be conservative, we're using those ITE numbers. We studied traffic between May 15th and May 17th, Thursday through Saturday. Riverneck Road sees about 2,900 cars per day, 1,400 in one direction, 1,500 in the other, and 2,000 on the weekend, 1,000 in each direction. Traffic speeds run between 31 and 38 miles per hour along Riverneck Road, based on our, based on our counts, and morning and evening peaks are about 7:45 to 8:45, 4:30 to 5:30. We meet both site distance and intersection site distance within the requirements. Actually, we're, we're pretty significantly over for all of those to make sure that we have site distance in both directions when we are leaving the site and those cars that would be approaching the site. So again, I'd love to have our traffic engineers here, specifically one evening, to, to discuss. The traffic study is very long. There's a lot of information there relative to the traffic along Riverneck Road. Certainly, I would anticipate that you'd most likely have it peer-reviewed, and, and that would be great to have, too, when we have that discussion in the future. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ken File to talk a little bit about the architecture.
Good evening. My name is Ken File. I'm one of the owners of LYF Architects, and we're the architects on the project. We're out of Haverhill, Mass. And those are the plans. Yeah, we can start with the floor plan. We'll brief, I'll just go down each one. Perfect. So this first, this first level plan you see here is the lower level that you enter from the rear of the building. You can go to the next plan. This here is the upper level plan that you'll actually access from the upper level of the site, which is right off of Riverneck, Riverneck Road, and that's where, where folks mentioned about the mezzanine, and you enter to, we'll call it the second floor mezzanine, and then there'll be internal stairs that could take you downstairs to the lower level. Elevation-wise, so the street facade, which is, is it a way to go a little bit higher? The other way, sorry. There, perfect. Thank you very much. The lower ele... Here we go. The lower elevation that you see there, that's the street facade along Riverneck Road. And for this facade that faces the main road, we've used traditional New England architectural elements. We have a brick base, we have painted lap siding, we have gable entry elements on certain, certain bays to break up the facade and also reduce and give scale to the building. In the initial submission that you saw, we act, we actually had some higher roof elements that, I know an amendment came in earlier, where we actually reduced the roof element between the gables to, again, reduce the height of the building from the street. At each of the entries, we have pilasters and trim at all the entry elements. We have signage boards with gooseneck lighting, and the height of the building from the street is approximately 14 feet, and the top of the gable elements to the peak is around 18.6. The side of the building, which, it's toward the top of the page, yep, the very top one, and to the right. There we go, perfect. So the side of the building, we continue the architectural elements around the corner, along the driveway. We have the brick base, we have the painted lap siding, and we have a roof element that goes along the entire side elevation as it, as the driveway drove, goes down into the site. And then the rear, and you see the second elevation down from there, that's on the opposite side of the building. That's the long side that has a driveway, again, slopes down. We returned the front elevation elements approximately 20 feet. Again, the brick, the lap siding, and the roof element. The rear elevation, as we scroll down a little bit, this is the, the side that's facing the inward to the site. This is where you can see it's, it's the typical metal panel used for contractor storage buildings. The overall height at the rear of the building is 24 feet, and what we've done, again, it's built into the side of the, into the hillside, I guess, that we're building up against Riverneck Road. So again, it appears as a one-story building along Riverneck Road, and it's a two-story building in the back, but that's because the grade drops down. The rear building, if you go to the next page, again, is a typi, is fully a typical metal panel contractor storage building. Its overall height, again, is 24 feet. It's not readily visible from the road unless you're driving down the driveway into the site, because the building is in the rear and it's centered within the site. Now we get to the pretty pictures. This is my favorite part. All right. So this is, this is the perspective of driving along Riverneck Road at the driveway entry. And here you can see, it appears it is a one-story building from the road. You see the gable elements that break up the facade, and you also see that we have, that the height of the building, again, we've lowered the roof element in between the gables to lower the appearance of a larger building along Riverneck Road. On the next elevation, please. This is driving down the other side, going the other direction on Riverneck Road. Again, you see the same elements, you see the landscaping, and then the return of the main, the road facade returning 20, 20 feet approximately down that side elevation as the driveway slopes down. And then this is the rear. Can you scoot it a little? I want to see a little bit left on the left there, please. Perfect. So this elevation here, this perspective, you can see this is the rear of the building that we're proposing. Again, the metal, the metal panel and the bays and the man doors, and you can see the second building that's tucked in behind the building, and if you scroll a little bit to the right, please. And this is where you can see the view up the driveway, how the building is built into the hillside. Again, reducing the height of the building as it faced Riverneck Road. Can you go back to, to up? And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Katie. Yeah, that one, perfect, thank you.
I just wanted to mention briefly that there's not intended to be any utilities on the roof here, so we were cognizant of that. We wanted to make sure that any rooftop elements would be screened by sort of the parapet or roofline around there, but Commonwealth's not intending to put any utilities on the roof, so we're not concerned about that view shed. With that, we'd really like to get as much feedback as possible this evening, certainly from the board and Thea Butter, so I'm going to sit down, and we look forward to having more discussion.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have, we have a few letters, I believe.
We have first letters from Board of Health. Dear Planning Board, this letter is regarding the proposed project from Commonwealth Construction Utilities Incorporated to construct an outdoor contractor's yard at 191 to 195 Riverneck Road. This proposed project is located in the Town Water Resources High Aquifer Protection Zone Two and the State Water Resource Protection Zone Two Wellhead Protection Area. Therefore, this project would require approval from the Board of Health pursuant to Town of Chelmsford General Provisions, Chapter 201, Board of Health, Article 7, Groundwater Protection Zone. This proposed project shall consistently comply with the Town of Chelmsford Bylaw, Chapter 63, Hazardous Materials. It is designed to ensure comprehensive safeguards against hazardous materials that pose significant current or potential threats to public health, welfare, safety, and the environment, guaranteeing their safe management. This proposed project shall consistently comply with the Town of Chelmsford General Provisions, Chapter 201, Board of Health, Article 10, Model Floor Drains. This proposed project has been approved by the Town of Chelmsford Department of Public Works to connect a town sewer. If this project plans to have dumpsters on site, then it must meet Town of Chelmsford General Provisions, Chapter 201, Board of Health, Article 5, Commercial Refuse Dumpster Collection Licensing and Operation, Respectfully, Donna Greenwood. And from the Fire, dear members of the board, regarding the special permit requests for 191 to 195 Riverneck Road, this office provides the following comments and conditions. First bullet, a fire flow analysis shall be conducted and submitted to this office to ensure adequate water supply and protection. All construction shall comply with all applicable codes, including but not limited to the Massachusetts State Building Code, Massachusetts CMRs, Massachusetts General Laws, NFPA Standards, and the Town of Chelmsford Bylaws. Plans will be reviewed by the office as part of the building permitting process. Site access is considered adequate based on the submitted truck turning plans. Any changes to the site plans will require updated truck turning plans to demonstrate continued adequate access. Curbs on the site shall be sloped, granite, or mountable in style. I respectfully request this letter and these conditions be incorporated into the decision-making process and made part of the public record. Sincerely, Josh Abbott, Captain Fire Prevention Officer, Chelmsford Fire Department. And the police and the tax collector have no concerns.
Okay. Evan, do you have anything to add?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. So as with any of the project, big projects that we undertake, I do want to do a peer traffic review on this one. So what I'm going to ask the board as we go around, are there any major concerns, issues, questions that people have that would be good to get out early on? And then are there any, is there anything specific to the traffic review that you would like to see or concerns that you want the peer reviewer to address? Okay. Mike, let's start with you.
Nothing particular here. I think the traffic review will take care of a lot of it. And we should probably think about, about noise.
Okay. Joel?
I did have a question about the gravel area in the back. Is that, is that going to have some sort of, how, is that going to infiltrate anything that is, what are the falls on that? Is that going to infiltrate, or is that captured and, and also captured in the stormwater system?
Yep, so there are three catch basins proposed at the rear there, so the gravel is intended to be like a dense-grade gravel, so it acts in many ways as just another pavement. It just can't be destroyed in the same way as pavement by machinery or whatnot. But what we intend to store back there is nothing that could leak fluids. It's mostly like steel plates, piping, other objects that you just don't want to place on pavement, so we're giving just a gravel storage area. But those, there are catch basins back there. All the runoff will be directed to the catch basins, and it'll follow the same treatment train as, as typical stormwater on the site.
So a particular reason why you, why you didn't, you know, also not going to pave that, just so you can capture the stormwater into your system?
Paving that? Well, that is going into the system. So we didn't pave it because the materials that are going back there, I said steel plates, piping, trench boxes, other items that they use as part of their construction processes would damage pavement and ruin the pavement anyway. So we want to just give it a gravel pad, but again, that gravel pad is graded and drained and treated the same exact way as any other pavement.
Okay. Okay. And then the other question I had was, are there tenants involved with this as well?
So the front, the front building that has 14 units, that is proposed to be, there's been discussion about maybe maintaining one unit for, for Commonwealth, but the intention is that the front building will be rented to other contractors, plumbers, tile layers, you know, anybody that's in kind of the trades that would be allowed under the IA. So yes, it'll be, it'll be contractors that go in there.
So you, you are a loophole for the purpose of the fleet storage, but how, how do you control whether any potential tenant's going to be using materials that might be considered a loophole in the category of a loophole?
So what we have to do is we have to be cognizant of who's going to move in and whether or not they meet the requirements of the permits that we have achieved. So all the storage that is intended to be at the rear or outside, we don't want it to leak fluids, we don't want it to have hazardous materials, we want it to be clean. But in addition, those, all of those catch basins within that area are fitted in the same manner that the loophole would require. So they have their oil booms, they have a long-term pollution prevention plan, which will have to be modified with any tenants that move in to ensure that, you know, pollution is a forefront for conserving the site.
Okay. And I didn't, I haven't read the pollution plan yet, but are there, like, say spill kits or things like that in case there's a spill?
Yeah, so as we've kind of done in the past, we can't really dictate what it's going to say until we have occupancy and tenants, but what we've essentially said is that there will be, each individual unit is going to create its own spill management or hazard management plan that all employees will have to follow, and so that long-term pollution prevention plan will be continuously updated as those... And so that long-term pollution prevention plan will be continuously updated as those tenants come, come forward or we figure out exactly what uses are going to be there. So for now, it has a pretty basic outline of your typical snow storage, litter pickup, stormwater compliance. You know, there's going to be some sort of spill management, but it's going to be dictated based on what's used there. So right now, it's, it's an outline that has all your typical information and it'll have to be defined when we get tenants.
That's part of the leasing agreement or how is that applied to them?
I probably could go in as part of the leasing agreement, but basically anyone that would have to move in would have to meet these requirements that we do and that'll be part of the permit process. You know, we have laid out permits based on uses and what we are able to do based on what we've shown. So if we can't have a tenant move in, that's not going to fit their criteria of the plans that we've applied for or shown in this application.
So we could have minimum requirements for individual O&amp;M clients? I did have a follow-up question on the gravel area.
Sure.
So is that completely impervious? So anything that does fall on that will be captured in the, in the treated mode and infiltrated, right?
So in the technical sense, not completely impervious, right? It has, your standard pavement has a curve number of 98. This dense grade gravel has a curve number of 96. So in the scheme of grass to woods, it is practically impervious, but in the technical sense, is it impervious? It's not technically impervious. But so it is intended to drain to all of the catch basins, which are fitted with all the pretreatments and, and the stormwater trains that meet all the requirements.
So if, so would plows be stored there?
So there is a discussion about plows, but what we would do with plows prior is we would drain all the hydraulic fluids so that there's no fluids readily within the plows when they're stored at the rear.
Okay. But if there were some material on the plow itself or on the box itself and that does get into the gravel, would that get filtered out or would that be permeated through?
I guess it depends on what the material is, right? So the gravel could act in itself as a barrier and a treatment system, the same way any soil would, which is why we require two feet of separation from groundwater. I think in the realistic sense, any kind of liquid or spill would likely run off with a rain event to the catch basins, but there is, it could percolate through because it is not technically impervious.
Okay. Thank you. John?
For the, for the traffic data, I think one thing that would help me is to know, you know, an estimate of the number of employees that will be working on the site, including the tenants, an estimate of the specific equipment and, you know, and the daily operations he would plan to, you know, to use. And I would need to know, like, would there be limits on how many vehicles that, if I'm a tenant and I rent one of the bays, are there limits on how many vehicles I can have depending on the nature of my business? I may have, you know, more than one truck or one van. I think that would be helpful information. And also if we get a, an estimate on the number of vehicles that would be bringing, delivering materials to the site, I think that would be helpful. Because I'm assuming just due to the nature of the business, a lot of that material, especially if it's palletized, would be coming on larger trucks like a flatbed or something of that nature. So that would, that would help, I think would be helpful.
Anita?
I don't necessarily have questions. I, I mean, I still have concerns about the amount of trucks that are going to be on Riverneck Road, especially, you know, how close the houses are to the road. This is not, it's a windy road and I quite frankly don't think this is really appropriate in this neighborhood.
Um, well, I did want to comment that I thought, I think taking that other third structure is an improvement and I appreciate all the buffering in the front of the landscape buffering on the front, although the view shed didn't look as nearly as dense as the photo here, I mean, the rendering here. So I, I don't know if it's going to be somewhere in between. I also appreciate that it's, I mean, Anita had said on a previous meeting that she wanted to like drive by and not know it was there, basically. And I feel like the kind of downsizing the facade in, in height, et cetera, is helpful along those lines. I have concerns about the trucks on the windy country road and the proximity to the homes on Riverneck. I also have concerns about the trucks, you know, the, we, on a previous presentation on similar property, a lot of those little tiny cul-de-sac streets along the way, Monmouth, McFarland, and Clark, et cetera, all have small fam-, you know, families with small children who wait at the bus stop. So I guess I particularly have concerns about safety as it pertains to the traffic study at those particular locations. And then I appreciate the fact that it, the headlights will go into the engineering company. I would want to know about the hours of operation and then, you know, noise, the rattling of the street and the whole neighborhood. And I guess my main concern is the contractor's yard in this location because I don't feel like it, even though it's kind of hidden in disguise, I don't feel like it enhances anything for the neighborhood.
Okay. Mercy?
So yeah, a couple of concerns. I mean, and they've already been brought up by a few people. My concerns is like what chemicals are going to be used on this property, as this being on the aquifer and concerns with chemicals seeping into the soil and PFAS being a huge issue in the town. On your two gravel areas, you also have them listed as storage equipment and if those trucks are leaking, you've got excavator parking and storage equipment back there. If those trucks are leaking anything, that's going right into the gravel and into the The, we talk about, as John said, these different bays for different contractors, you know, how many trucks, how many employees, how many people are coming in and out? Because you can sit there and say, oh, you know, say 15, it's going to add 15 additional people in and out of the property, but that's an unknown number right now, not knowing who's going to be in there. So really what is going to change in bringing that in? As Deirdre said, the sounds of the trucks rattling, what type of damage is that going to then also include to create on Riverneck Road for the residents who live there? Hours of operation so that this isn't going to become an issue for the neighborhoods that are nearby.
Sarita?
I guess I have a bunch of questions. The first one is, and I'm sure it's in the plans, but I didn't see the detail. The fence in the back, what's the height and what's the materials of it? Six, it stuck in. And the amount of snow storage on here, what's the square footage of the total? Okay, if you guys could look that up. I was a little bit concerned with the snow storage towards the front of the property in that corner where there's a lot of landscaping, because it looks like you're pushing snow storage in there after you spend all this money with the landscaping and it gets destroyed. The other thing is, I understand that the car is facing towards the building less lights, but a lot of people will back into these spaces. Another concern is people parking where they shouldn't be if you have an excess of cars and not enough spaces to contain them. They could park along the front, different areas along the side, and I don't know if there's any new parking signs there. Mentioned, I think you mentioned that nothing was intended to go on the roof, but is there air conditioning units that are going to be up there? There's going to be no air conditioning in this entire thing? Sounds hot on the ground?
Yeah, there'll be mini splits in the offices and then the garage and the just have heat only.
Okay. And, let's see what other stuff. In regards to the gravel, in that back left portion where there's proposed equipment parking, is there curbing that's going to be in there before the gravel, like a pavement curb or anything to prevent stuff going into that gravel zone?
Are you talking about the, the split between where it's paved and to the gravel?
Yeah.
So yes, there's a curb, but there's also the pavement pitches away from the gravel.
Okay. And then on the gravel portion, that's to the right where the excavator, things are going to go there. I know a lot of that type of equipment has hydraulic lines and stuff. They are known to break and there's other things involved with it. And I hear about it being close to being, you know, impervious, but when it rains, stuff's still going to get through there to the ground. So I still have concerns with stuff leaking into the soil over time, so that's just one And that's the majority of what I have right now.
Okay, thanks.
So I did hear a couple questions about that excavator storage area specifically, so, you know, what we could offer is an impervious barrier below the gravel layer and we'll give a detail for that. So basically that just prevents anything from getting through that gravel surface and then anything would spill over back into the pavement and go back through its system.
Excellent. Thank you. I've got a few questions and comments. There are a significant number of trees being lost with this development, so it would be good to have some idea of how many trees would be removed, how many we're getting back. And I really would like, because of the significant loss of tree canopy on this, I would like to have the landscaping be as dense as we can make it to recover some of those trees. The other thing might be to consider some compensation for the town to plant trees elsewhere in the area, so that's something to keep in mind in the future. In terms of the traffic study, at the last meeting, I did ask that those side streets be included in the study, so I would like to see those as part of the peer analysis as well as really a focus on the number of trucks and the number and the impact of the trucks on the neighborhood and road, not just the, the volume. I, like Sarita mentioned, I found that there's not nearly enough snow storage in this space, so it might be good to take a look at that. As I've asked for in other projects, I think in this, specifically in this one, granite curbing would be needed throughout the project to make sure that that stormwater is contained within the site and treated as opposed to damaged curbing that might allow runoff outside of the, the site. I really do like the, the design of that front of the building, so I applaud that. The truck turning, I noticed for the fire truck turning diagram, it only came in from the left side, but the fire station is on the right side, so it'd be good to see it from both. And then I had a question about the, the path seems to be going through a fence as well for the fire truck path. I wanted to ask about that.
Yep, so as Commonwealth occupies the rear of the lot, they actually just want to have it closed from the front, so they're really just gates. So what that shows is fences with gates coming across so that Commonwealth can access, the fire department will be able to access as well, but it just prevents anybody from getting to the rear where they store their, where they store their equipment and where they store their, their business materials.
So there would be a gate at that excavator loading area?
Right, so on the driveway to the right, there's a gate that crosses that driveway and then on the driveway to the left, there's a gate that crosses that driveway.
But on the fire truck path, it also showed it going through the excavator loading area.
Can we display it so you can see it?
Coming from the middle. There's a gate here also.
Oh, yes.
Oh, there is?
Yep, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I got you.
I was really confused about that.
And that gate was actually added per one of John's comments at the informal meeting where he was concerned about how trucks would be able to deliver to that rear and then turn around and get out. So that gate was added to give the ability for a WB67 vehicle if that was what was needed. You know, we anticipate it would probably be more like a box truck, but if there is the need for a large vehicle, it does have the ability to pull all the way through and not have to back up or turn around or make any three-point turns.
I'm not sure where I read it, but I thought I read something about conversations between you and DPW about a sidewalk or potential sidewalks?
So at the departmental review meeting that we had a couple months ago now, one of the comments was that DPW has plans to put sidewalks on this road at some point, but they don't know which side. So it would be their preference that we give to their sidewalk fund rather than construct the sidewalks because they could just end up on the wrong side and require crossings on Riverneck Road that they don't want. So instead of adding a frontage sidewalk along this project, I'd rather us work with them to determine an amount that would be valuable to them.
Okay. So at some point during this process, it'd be good to get a final number and get that into the decision as well. All right. And then I also read on the supplemental data report on page four about storefront parking for customers. And that concerned me because that was not taken into account in the traffic.
Yeah, I don't know necessarily what was described by customers. The storefront parking, we're trying to paint a picture that there would, that the parking to access the building is more like a storefront than like an office building.
Okay.
So you park in front of the building, you can walk directly into. There's not going to be any customers, there's no showrooms as part of this. The people that will be parking in the front are likely going to be admin, office assistants, stuff like that, whereas the contractors and the people taking the vans or whatever will park in the rear. I think the intention of that sentence was mostly just to paint the picture of how the parking were operated up front, not necessarily who's going to park there.
Okay. So there would be no customers, it wouldn't be a storefront?
No, customers in stores, no.
Okay. And then, lastly, I know that it's still early in the process, but looking at the sustainability checklist, having a little bit more detail in there about commitments that the project would make for, in the order of sustainability, electric vehicle parking, more trees, bike path, things like that would be helpful as well for this project.
So a lot of the commitments to sustainability will come along as the architectural and the interior of the building actually are beginning to be designed, plumbed, all that stuff. We can actually commit to types of systems that we're going to use, the efficiency of those systems. We can definitely look at potential external commitments that we can make and see what will work not only for the business but for the site itself, so we can address that in a, in a coming revision.
All right, that's all I had. Anyone have any other comments, concerns?
I guess one thing that occurs to me is when, when things are being delivered to the tenants of the bays, like, how's that going to work? Is there going to be a main office where someone will sign for things or?
Yeah, I mean, each individual tenant will have to be responsible for the deliveries that come in, so, you know, the intention is basically that we've given them a plethora of space in the back, so space shouldn't be an issue with, with deliveries. How they operate and how they receive each delivery, that's going to be based on the tenants and how they want to do that.
So at this point, I think we do want a, a peer review for the traffic and the, DPW's taking care of the stormwater review, right? Okay. All right. So at this point, I think we will open it up for public comment. Again, because we still have the traffic study, the peer review traffic study to, to do, I'd like to try and limit comments on traffic at this point unless you have some suggestions or ideas for additional things that the peer reviewer would want to look for that we could add to the scope.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the planning board and assembled fellow residents. Sean Campbell, 19 Marmont Street, Precinct 10, representative. I do have a prepared speech. I'll try to, you know, be brief about it. Before I get into the speech, could you pull up, Evan, could you pull up my article that I emailed so I could see kind of the picture? I could show everybody what the site looked So I could see kind of the picture. I could show everybody what the site looks like now, because I think that will be helpful.
Was that, was that posted to the agenda, do you know?
It is, yeah.
I think I saw under departmental letters in that area.
Okay, yeah, it's towards the end.
I think if you scroll down, you'll see some kind of pictures. And before I get into my speech too, I'd like to point out that it's, you might wanna look at the existing buildings that, you know, were firm, former Mercury headquarters and see the setback to see how far back from River Neck Road they are compared to the setback, I believe she said it was more than forty feet. I think she said it was ninety feet. Is that what you said, Katie? Okay. I mean, I I can tell you that if you were on Google Maps, so that's what you have now. That's what the site is. It's it's just, you know, trees. And then there is a house that they're gonna bulldoze. And then if you scroll down here, you'll see kind of what the, what these sites look like. And I think it's important that this this project really represents two projects. You have a contractor yard, and then you have commercial bays, which are essentially totally different things. And I can tell you that I rented a bay in West Tech, and they do not have contractor yards in West Tech. I mean, these are bays. It's very clean, and it's also right off the highway. There are no residents around. There's a gun range. If you know where the Tinsborough shooting range is, that's where it is. There's no residents. So if you scroll down, Evan, I I think you'll see, maybe you scroll up. Okay. So this is their existing site, just to kind of give you an idea. And if you look in the back there, you can kind of see all that storage. And, you know, that's what they're currently operating. And if you scroll up, this is a contractor yard that I found in Chelmsford, and this is what they look like. So this is one piece of the puzzle that they wanna create. I mean, that's that's what it is. I mean, it's, you park stuff there. They have little bays and, I mean, that's that's what they wanna create. Now, they're doing two things. They're gonna have rental units in front of that, but that will be what will be behind it. So that's pretty much all I had from hearing, and I'm gonna get into my speech now. So I'll get into that. So I would like to start by saying this is not personal. I am sure Commonwealth Construction is a great company, and I wish them success in all they do. I have, I've also previously submitted a report via email, which is right here, detailing my professional assessment of the special permit application for the proposed outdoor contractor yard and rental bays. I stand before you tonight, not only as a professional offering a technical review, but as a representing the profound concerns of my neighborhood that feels its very characters being threatened. And a close neighbor to the site, I can tell you that when I was a child, I I did swim at that house they're gonna tear down. That was my my friend's house. So I'm very familiar with the property. Based on my review and findings outlined in my report, and in my capacity as a representative for Precinct Ten, I must respectfully recommend that the board deny these special permits for the proposed development in its current form, presenting significant unresolved issues that could lead to negative impacts on our community and its resources. The first issue is environmental impact. A paramount concern and central findings of my report is the location of this proposed outdoor contractor yard and its associated bays within a designated to aquifer-protected district. The nature and operation typically associated with contractor yards, particularly with multiple independent tenants, involves the handling and storage of various materials like gravel, stone, dirt, rock, heavy equipment, parking, vehicle maintenance, and the potential for oil, fuel, chemical spills, the inherent risk of accidental spill, leak, or uncontrolled runoff such in a sensitive area, especially given the lack of natural protection, clay layer in our aquifer poses an unacceptable and continuous threat to Chelmsford's drinking water supply. I mean, this is, this is, you know, I don't, I didn't show it in my map, but we're right by where Chelmsford is getting their water. I mean, this is right there. My analysis indicate that even with the proposed mitigation, the nature of an outdoor industrial operation carries an elevated and cautious threat of pollutants leaching into our water supply. The board's rep responsibility safeguard Chelmsford's critical natural resources demands a more conservative approach in this vulnerable zone. So that's kind of one element. Traffic was my next, you know, did you say you didn't want me to go on that, Chris?
Okay. Not tonight.
Okay. That. A next issue I have is compatibility with a neighborhood character and quality of life. The establishment of an outdoor contractor yard with multiple rental bays represents an extensive industrial use that is fundamentally incompatibly with the existing character of surrounding River Neck Road neighborhood, which is primarily residential. Such facilities are associated with increased noise, dust, visual impacts. The president, the presence of mixed operation from multiple tenants makes it challenging to predict and control operation hours, noise, levels from machinery, and light pollution from the site. These factors collectively threaten to significantly diminish the quality of life for nearby residents. Critically, the site currently benefits from a natural wooded lot that borders the highway, providing a critical natural buffer that significantly reduces highway noise for nearby residents. Any significant clearing of this development will eliminate this vital sound barrier, leading to an obviously increased in noise levels for the surrounding community. This type of development runs against the spirit of the Community Enhancement and Investment Overlay District, CIOID, which seeks high-quality businesses and developments that enhance neighborhood characteristics and the tax base responsible. It will be a significant deterrent to attracting and retaining the very types of businesses Chelmsford aims to foster, potentially impacting property values and future development in the area. Tax revenue. A concern arises if the property's tax assessment is primarily confined to the building structures, potentially overlooking the significant commercial value and impact generated by the extensive outdoor contract yard. This could result on a burden on the town services, infrastructure relative to the tax revenue generated. As as detailed in my report, several critical technical planning deficiencies remain. The project being fundamentally misplaced and is on the wrong side of the road for heavy use, lacking any direct connection or proximity to Route one twenty-nine commercial industrial corridor. This forces, so I'm kind of going into traffic there, but I'm suggesting that I think if this use case was where it is, it's better suited than where they're proposing it. The gross incompatibility of an outdoor contractor yard with adjacent residential neighborhoods and nearby professional businesses creates unavoidable, visible, light, significant noise pollution, a concerning lack of permitting. So I checked with Jose to see if they had a contractor's yard permit, which I found on the other site, and I wasn't surprised that they didn't at their current site. And not to say that that's a problem. I think it's a fit for Progress Ave. I mean, I think that it fits that neighborhood that they could do these contractor yard things without the permit. But I I learned that they they currently are not in compliance and do not have a contractor yard at their existing site. So so let's see what else do I have here. Approving this project, particularly with its multi-tenant industrial nature and its sensitive district, could establish an undesirable precedent for future development applications within. So basically, you allow one, you you might have more, just like Progress Ave. I mean, that's what they they have there. It is vital that the board maintains consistency when implying its zoning bylaws and planning principles to ensure sustainability and compatible growth across the town. In summary, the proposed outdoor contractor yard and rental bays presents a sustainable unavoidable risk concerning aquifer protection, traffic, public safety, neighborhood compatibility, unbiased financial contribution, and thoroughly documented in my report, these are, these are concerns shared by all the affected in my neighborhood. No one was welcoming this project. I urge the planning board to meticulously review these concerns and prioritize the long-term health, safety, well-being of Chelmsford residents and its environment. Based on my professional assessment, it is clear to the community, I recommend that the special permit application for this project be denied. Lastly, I wanted to point out, somebody emailed me, when you're on the highway and you're driving by, you know, Burlington, you see kind of nice industrial buildings and signs. I think you see like iRobot. When you're passing by Chelmsford, if you approve this, you're gonna see a contractor yard. Because this is, you know, this is the other side of the property is four ninety-five. So they'll be like, oh, there's, there's Chelmsford. There's a nice contractor yard that you saw in that photo. You won't see it from River Neck Road, but we're gonna show the world on four ninety-five. And somebody else also notified me that if you look at the town GIS with their current site, and you roll back to two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three, that they have vehicles that are not on paved areas that would not be treated currently by stormwater management. So there could be some issues right now of whether they're really complying with some of these things. I mean, I I know they said they would drain hydraulic fluid. I just heard that out of these plow trucks. I mean, maybe, but I mean, what about in twenty-five years? I mean, look at Progress Ave. I mean, drive down there. Do you think they're doing that? They'd probably laugh at you. You drain this or, who knows what they do? Lastly, I'm almost done. I saw a report somebody sent about a trail. They're looking to create like a a trail to this property. So I don't have any comments on that, but I, you know, I would say it sounds like a separate issue. Somebody wanted an easement, I think. I think it was Doug. Okay. So, I mean, it could be a good idea, could be a bad idea, but I I think you wouldn't want, I mean, a trail is nice, but that trail could lead to, roughly off the top of my head, it could be like twenty acres of town property that is protected. And I don't think you would want to give the people that are working in the
Could we, could you stick to what we know so far?
Okay. There could be concerns with allowing people that'll work there just to wander in the woods. You know, so the neighborhood might wanna dissect. It could be good, could be bad, but you probably wouldn't want the entrance to be in the contractor yard.
Thanks.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Frank Smart, two twenty-three River Neck Road. If you drive by my house, I live in the section of River Neck Road, it's probably in the worst condition. We have trucks that drive by five o'clock. There's usually a couple. Six o'clock, there's a couple. Seven o'clock, there's a couple. Try sleeping. They rattle coming across the rough section of road. Most of them are empty. They leave empty. They come back about three o'clock. If you take a good look at my front yard, I have a block wall. On the block wall, there's big chunks of asphalt. Then they have been there for two months. Where'd they come from? Take a guess. I had a hire, excuse me, hire, I had to purchase a contractor's power broom to get the rest of the asphalt out of my lawn. How to get there? I know these vehicles that are gonna be departing are gonna be heavier than, I'll use the phrase, twin trucking. I really don't wanna see this. You know, my yard is taking a beating. I don't wanna clean it. Really, this is tough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doug Chandler, forty-seven Augusta Way. And I'm also the Chelmsford representative on the Middlesex Canal Commission. I'm here tonight to propose that we work out with the developer a future, an easement for a future multi-use trail, as the last gentleman mentioned, between River Neck Road and the pointy end of the north side of their project, which is at state and town property. The idea of this trail, oh, I have, it's the one that's, it's the next to the last, I think. It's called MCC, One Chart. No, that's, that's my letter. I had a four-page letter, which I was gonna read to you, but I've been convinced to keep it to five minutes. No, not the letter, Evan. It's the, it's the next one. It says One Chart. Number three, the bottom one? No, the bottom one. No, not the bottom of chart, the the last, the last link, sorry. I also have a twelve-page briefing, which I was gonna give to you.
All right, where do you want me to go?
It's, it's the yellow, the yellow, bottom yellow. Okay, yeah, now you got it. No, that's not the right one.
This is the bottom one.
No, not the, the bottom link, the bottom yellow link.
It is the bottom link.
The one that's titled something One Chart. It's got three, it's got three maps on the same chart.
I think that's the second and last one.
Oh, second and last, okay.
Not this one.
No, that's, that's, it should be number
It's the second to the last link on the agenda. Yep.
I reclaim my time, Mr. Chairman.
MCC, MCC One Chart.
It's the second. You had it.
Evan, you had it.
This one.
That one.
That one.
Yep.
Hey, that's great, yeah. Well, I watch Congress. Mr. Chairman, I reclaim my time. Okay, so this, this gives us, this gives us an idea of where this trail is going. Why would anybody wanna put a an easement on a bike path from River Neck Road up to the highway ramp? Well, that's not where it's going. The top-left picture is the Bay Circuit Trail. It's a multi-use trail of all different types of trails from Duxbury to Newburyport, and there are only two gaps in this, in this thing. It runs in a circle between one twenty-eight and four ninety-five. There are only two gaps. Brockton, which is not our problem, and Lowell, where the Bruce Freeman Trail, if you can look carefully there, you won't see it, but the the west, it splits at Concord. The west side is the Bruce Freeman Trail, and the the east side is the Yankee Doodle Trail coming up through Billerica, which is being built right now. These things come up and they both end either just before the Lowell border or just over the Lowell border at Crosspoint Tower. We're, we're trying to make a connection between them and also continue on to Newburyport by by getting up to the Rourke Bridge and the Vandenberg Esplanade and so on. But the part that we care about tonight is, if you look at the upper-right picture, you've got there four ninety-five at the top and Route Three at the side, and the Mercury Computer is the big brown buildings there. And over on the left side of that is where the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail is going under four ninety-five in an in a previously existing railroad tunnel, right at the little point of the the big blob of land there that's, that's. Anyway, so the idea is to get from Crosspoint Tower down to Billerica and get onto the tow path of the old Middlesex Canal. That's why I'm, Middlesex Canal, that's why I'm here. Tow paths on canals were where the horsewalk that pulled the boats on the canal in the early eighteen hundreds. It has all the same characteristics as a railroad right away, like the Bruce Freeman Trail. Long, straight, smooth, flat, all that neat stuff. And there are stretches of that that are still there in the woods and and from Canal Street. In fact, Canal Street in Chelmsford used to be the tow path of the canal. And if you keep going down south on on Canal Street, which is the next road over after the connector on River Neck Road, if you keep going south there, you actually come to stretches where you can see the canal and the fact that you're on a tow path. So our proposal is to bridge this gap So our proposal is to bridge this gap between the Bruce Freeman Trail and the Yankee Doodle Trail by connecting the end of the Yankee Doodle Trail over to this, to the, to Billerica, at the Billerica Dam, North Billerica Dam. So there's only like one major problem and stretch in that, because other places are fine, the Riverneck Road, on the bridge, over the Route 3 and under the connector, Tony, the town engineer, says that's actually already wide enough to paint, to stripe it for a bike path, in fact, there's almost a bike trail there already. And that gets to Canal Street upon which we've got the, the town road going down to the, to the Water Department, I'm sorry, the Water District. And, but we got to get across from Golden Cove Road to the Riverneck Street Bridge over Route 3, and not going through that big intersection with Golden Cove and 129 and Riverneck. The bikers, my friends, the bikers tell me, I'm not a biker, I'm a cross-country runner, my friends, the bikers tell me that that is a horrible intersection, and as you all know, Riverneck Road has its good spots and it has its narrow, windy, bad spots too, for bikers. The bottom map shows the idea of going from the Bruce Freeman Tunnel at 495 around the town property. Everything there in green is basically town property, various departments, town, Water District, things like that. Or, there's a fence, and over that fence, at the red line, is state-owned right away from the 495 ramp. So in Billerica, the state let them build the Yankee Doodle Trail down, down the embankment from the, from the highway, and in this flat stretch, this like original farmland there that runs along over to the tightest part of the ramp, at the tightest part of the ramp there, there's, there's a gap of just the, just the size of this property, or 191, or going through the Water District, which is also a bad idea. We need an easement for a future trail which is someday going to be built. Oh, I was also going to mention, since I'm, since I'm trying to keep it quick, everything I had to say is expanded on even more in those three, those three links, the last three links, so anybody in the audience that wants to look up and like, you want to read my briefing? You want to hear more? Go ahead, that's where it is.
So Doug, in the, over here, Doug, front. In the interest of time, I am going to ask you to wrap it up, and then ask that you reach out to the, the applicants to try and, and have some further discussions.
Okay, thanks. I also want, before I leave, I wanted to mention that I'm authorized by the Middle Six Canal Commission to represent them in everything to do with the town on this, also the Middle Six Canal Association, which is a nonprofit group that does sort of the same things as the Canal Commission, and also the Friends of Regional Towpaths and Trails, which is a, an informal group made up mostly of MCA, Canal Association people. I also work with the NIMCOG, who, NIMCOG's Mike explained who they are, they have a Greater Lowell Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Committee, and they've got an advisory board to that, on which I'm a member from Chelmsford, and also so is, are the BPAC leaders, our friend Robert Klinkhanger, Klemmer, and Josh Warburton are both on that committee too, with me. So the BPAC, BPAC is behind this, NIMCOG is behind this idea, and so are some other people that you don't know, like Fort and so on. So with all that going on, the probability of actually getting funded for this at any reasonable time, less than a decade, is increasing greatly. MassDOT likes it, NIMCOG likes it, there's a good chance that this could come along, and a missing link in this trail is an easement somewhere to Riverneck Road, and the easiest to get, the easiest time to put in an easement is when you're first building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Harshat, I live on 29 Monmouth Street, so I'm Sean's neighbor. I have a very small statement, I would like to reiterate and stress the points that Sean had made, he made more than what I wanted to speak, so all his, like, all his points have my support. And the only other point I want to mention beyond that is, having such a property in that area might depress property values. So reiterating all the points from Sean, and then adding this property value, property value point, so I do ask the board, to request the board to reconsider this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. Tom Bishop, 47 Drexel Drive, also operate a family business at 201 Riverneck Road, so the building that we've been talking about a lot tonight, the Mercury Headquarters, formerly owned by Mercury, then Davis, we now own one of them, and then also the other one is now purchased out, so just when we're doing the travel test, the, just for the road, those buildings are now occupied, so I'll just take that into account, because they were just acquired last fall, not really moved in until very recently, so I know the test was done prior to that, but just to take that into account, and then also, as everyone said tonight, the noise, and then just like, a lot of neighbors have kids walking around, we have people walk through our property all the time, walk their dogs, I just want to make sure that everyone's safe in that area, so just concerns of mine, to make sure we're taking care of those things, but other than that, you know, we're very pro-business here, we commend you guys for trying to expand, we did so the same way, so from an expansion point, we understand what you're trying to do, but we just want to make sure that everyone's safe in the process, and that it would be a good fit for the area, so that's all I have for tonight, but...
Thank you. Evan, that's a really good point, can you add that to the peer reviewer to also consider the timing of that versus the new businesses that moved in?
Hi, Vivian Merrill, 23 Maple Road, and I'm not really near the area, but over the years in my work with the town, I've heard of a lot of different proposals along this whole street, and a lot of different concerns, and I think the biggest thing that stands out to me, looking at this for the first time, is just, you've got a five-acre parcel, and you've got massive loss of wildlife habitat, and I'm just wondering if there's anything they can do in this proposal to try to preserve any of that habitat, because every time there's a big development in town, all those animals go somewhere, and I mean, on Littleton Road, when they made that big massive housing development over by, I don't know, the one with like eight different buildings there, the name of the street escapes me, the amount of animals we saw in neighborhoods five miles away was amazing. I mean, we had things we never even seen before, and these things have nowhere to go. So in addition to the tree canopy that, that was raised earlier, I think we also need to worry about the wildlife, because it's going to go somewhere, and I, I don't know, this, this is scary, and when you sit there and look at a cumulative effect of all the development that is, you know, proposed for this whole road, and that's, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? All right, there being none, I think at this point, we've got the peer review to do, we've got the stormwater, so at this point, I think I will take a...
Motion to continue.
Good idea, to the next meeting.
Is two weeks enough?
Yeah, it's, I'm almost wondering if it's, this is a month out.
The stormwater will be ready in two weeks.
Okay.
But traffic isn't going to be...
But I think there should be enough to discuss at the next meeting with plans and stormwater, we can focus on that before the traffic, probably in the following meeting. So if that is okay with the applicant, we can continue to the next meeting and focus on stormwater and site plan concern.
No, I, I agree, thank you. Just, we may, if we get the stormwater letter like the day of, we may request a continuance, just so that we have an opportunity to get through it before we appear before you.
That would help us out, too.
So, yes, so, so keep in mind that we may, we may seek a continuance, we'll try to do it as early as possible, so...
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Does the town have, does DPW have plans to review?
Yeah, they do.
They do. Okay. Were you going to modify the gravel area? And is that something that should be submitted as part of that?
All of those gravel areas were already considered impervious as, as far as the stormwater management goes, so it won't change what their review is, as far as the documentation that we have.
Okay.
All right, so motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Deirdre, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. See you in the next session.
August 13th.
August 13th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda is 300 Billerica Road Continued Public Hearing, Nexus Recovery. We received a revised site, site plan. We also revised stormwater OEM plan, and I asked Evan to attach the draft decision for review from the board, because we're pretty close to approving, so I wanted to make sure that we had the draft available. Are there any new updates from the applicant?
I think the only thing that occurred since the last hearing is that we made those two submissions, which are now part of the record, we discussed those at the last hearing, but they were submitted rather late, so they didn't actually make it into the record. So now you have the engineered stamp site plan and the operational manual updated to reflect the snow removals, the snow storage plan, which is also reflected on those plans, which was the last thing that we were discussing at the last meeting.
Okay.
So I don't think we have anything new, other than that, unless there's questions.
Any comments or questions from the board?
I have one comment, which is, it's been bothering me through this whole process, the unoccupied portion of the first floor, and I just wanted to articulate, and I don't know if it's something that should be in the decision at all, if other people agree, but I, I feel like there's synergy between a residential treatment and kind of an outpatient day program treatment, and I, while that is true, I feel like that would really change the use and the in-and-out access of the property, and so I would like to articulate that I, I would feel if there was something like a day program proposed, that that would be a quite distinct use for the property, and I wouldn't, I would want the applicant to have to return for...
So if the current use isn't expanded, but instead a different use is put in, such as an outpatient treatment program, then you're requesting that the applicant would come back and re-present that to the board.
Right, and I, I mean, I think that's, I think that would be commensurate, I mean, in keeping with our guidelines anyway, but I just kind of wanted to say it out loud.
And I think the applicant is saying that's fair.
So I think we would want to put that in as a special condition. The other thing we talked about last meeting as a special condition was along those same lines, but the approval, at least in my mind, is for the second floor and the first floor that is currently defined in the plans, anything beyond that would need to come back to the board for approval, depending on what the, and the use, well, depending on the use and also the capacity and things like that. So I think as part of that special condition, it would be that we were approving the Phase 1 for the square footage indicated on the plan as active on the first floor, and then anything beyond that would need to come to the board. People okay with that special?
I think that's acceptable to the applicant, the only thing that I noticed on this draft decision, and just reading it again, is that it doesn't reflect at all the discussion that 100 parking spaces were allocated for the proposed use, and maybe that should be noted, because when we come back at some future date to talk about maybe the expansion, we want it to be, we want the board to recognize that we're not using all the parking spaces for the, this current occupancy, and that there's, there is room for expansion in terms of parking.
That's fair enough.
Yeah, that makes sense. Evan, can you add that one?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. All right, are there any other questions, comments, issues on the decision draft?
There's a couple of things, I thought we should also mention that there's, we're not introducing any new or additional sources of infiltration. So that's clear that, that, that was something that we were conscious of. I don't know whether we should identify that, that the applicant's leasing the entire property, but that was important for me, at least to know, is that you're leasing the entire thing, there isn't somebody else potentially.
I can't hear you.
That they're leasing the entire property. Okay. And I also didn't know if we wanted to add, it was something that was important to me, was that even though it's a young company, the company's not very old, but that the people who, the principals are, have a lengthy experience in this area, just in case anybody who comes back to look at the decision would see, the company wasn't very old, but that we were knowledgeable that these are actually people who have a great deal of experience in this area, so that made a difference for me. That's it.
Okay. Do you want, do you want to take a motion to...
Not yet, it's still a public hearing, are there any folks who wish to speak on this, before we wrap things up? All right, so I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Deirdre, all in favor?
Aye.
Actually, I also just realized, Joel, you did...
I have mullered.
Mullered this one, and Anita, you mullered as well for this one, okay, so we're full board for, for this vote. All right, so I will then take a motion to approve the special permit, with the special conditions amended, as indicated tonight, for the, any additional use must come back to the board, including the expansion beyond the first floor footprint, 100 spaces reserved for this current use, no new additional sources of infiltration.
Well, I was thinking that would be in the facts, not, not in, not as a condition.
The facts, the two other facts of the young company, but principals are experienced, and the leasing of the entire property. So I'll take a motion with those.
I'll make a motion that we approve the decision on 300 Billerica Road with the aforementioned modifications.
Motion by Deirdre.
I'll second.
Second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Special permits approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda...
See, the mall was pulled, right?
Chelmsford Mall is requesting a continuation to August 13th, so I'll take a motion on that one.
I'll give you a motion to grant the continuance on the Chelmsford Mall project to August 13th.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by John.
I'm presuming that there's no time limit issue associated with this, is that correct?
No, we just started it.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I just want to be sure.
What do we have, what else do we have on the 13th?
Continued zoning hearing, continued planned production, 91 Riverneck.
It'll be a very similar agenda.
Well, I was just wondering for Riverneck, like, if Riverneck can't come on...
In the mall.
On the 13th. Should we, well, should we just move everything, like, should we skip? Should we, well, should we just move everything, like should we skip the 13th and move everything to the 23rd?
Well, 23rd, we had talked about not doing.
Well, she's talking about flipping it.
I'm just, I'm just kinda, I'm just
Flipping the night off.
I'm just, are we sure that they can come on the, they definitely want to come on the 13th?
Well, the mall, the mall traffic will definitely be discussed on the 13th.
Okay.
River Neck Road traffic may not be, and they make requests of continuance because of stormwater. May not have enough time.
On the 23rd?
On the 13th. No, the second one.
With the mall in your zoning public hearing.
I just wanted to, if there was an, like, if we're just gonna do it for one?
But we don't know.
We don't know.
Yeah, we don't know. And the next few meetings are going to continue to be big meetings.
Okay.
Regardless of how we stretch it out.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Alright, so it was motion by Mike, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Continued to August 13th. Next up on the agenda is the zoning amendment by law. Let me pull up my notes. Alright. So before we get to into the zoning discussions, I did want to make a couple statements. The, some of the slides have been updated. I'm not going to go through them all tonight. The EG recommended family updates. I updated those slides attached to the agenda with the information I spoke to at the last meeting. So we already reviewed that information, but it wasn't in the slides, so we updated the slides. On the massage establishment, those slides have been updated. Essentially, I just removed the additional superfluous slide at the end. No major changes on that. So what I'm going to do is, are there any public comments on any of the zoning article recommendations other than the CB Light and Kate's Corner articles? Didn't think there would be. So most of the discussion is going to be around Kate's Corner and CB Light. So my first question will be around the board. Are there any additional comments or questions or thoughts on those two articles before we open it up to the public?
Not here.
Joel?
I do. The question was asked by Mrs. Byam, I don't know if she's here tonight. About why didn't we, why wouldn't we leave what is currently the parking lot for Lockheed, that zoned CA that has a waiver for the parking? Why would we not leave that CA? Why would we make that CB Light? Why, why wouldn't we leave it? Why would we make it CB Light? And I thought it was a good question. And I actually didn't know at the time when I heard it that I had an answer. But I think there are several reasons why it does make sense to make it CB Light. The first one is that we are reducing, by reducing the zoning conflicts, we're reducing essentially the type of allowed uses that are in that area. So Lockheed right now has an IA use. And we are reducing that IA to this CB Light. So even though it sort of works for Lockheed in terms of how Lockheed does what they do. Nonetheless, it is true that we are essentially reducing the uses that are allowed on that property. And in that sense, we are effectively reducing the value of that property. I think for that reason, it makes sense that we would sort of correspondingly elevate the CA to CB Light to sort of offset that, so that we're being reasonable and fair to Lockheed. I think another reason is that the potential expansion if into that area is an expansion that is away from the residential areas. So if it was, if we were talking about the other side of their property, then I think that would be a little bit more of a concern because you're talking about expanding that existing use towards the residences, but you're actually expanding it towards the commercial area that borders Route 27. And so I think for those reasons, it actually is reasonable, I think overall, that we're still accomplishing our overall goal. Which is to reduce the intensity of uses and the conflicts that are there. And even though it does increase that use of that particular property, I think overall it's a balanced reduction that makes sense for everybody. So that would be my response to Mrs. Byam. And I certainly understand her concern and the concerns that they have about a number of the other things that they said. But I think that makes sense for, for everybody involved. That was the only comment I wanted to make about that.
Thank you. John?
No, no comments at this time.
Anita? Deirdre?
I'm good.
Marcy?
I'm good.
Sarita? Evan? Okay. So I also had a similar comment as Joel on that, that actual question. And it hit me as I was presenting the Chelmsford Mills proposal to the Final Square Committee last night, no, night before. What we really ended up doing with the CB Light is pulling, looking at the uses across the use table and pulling in the best and most beneficial uses from the IA, the CA, the CB. And really pulling those into the CB Light zone to allow the air, not only to create a buffer between IA and residential, but also to make a a zone that really does enhance the neighborhood in a way that none of our other zones are able to. Because each of those other zones has some benefits, but also some potential areas of concern. And so what we did with this zone is we were able to bring in all of those good things into a zone that I think, based on what we've seen so far, anywhere we put this zone is going to help that neighborhood. At least that, that's our goal and that's what I think I'm seeing so far. So in addition to Joel's points, I think that that is a reason to put this CB Light zone into that parcel as opposed to CA. Because if you really compare the uses allowed in CBA versus what we're proposing in CB Light. If Lockheed does let go of that property, there are some detrimental uses in the CA that might not be beneficial to that neighborhood. So that's another point I wanted to make on that. Alright. I know we had some, a letter from Mr. Bob Laporte as well. Evan, Joel, I've prompted both of you ahead of time for some potential feedback on this. Please correct me if I misstate anything, but my opinion on this is on point number one, Mr. Laporte, he proposes adjusting the height. And I'm not going to read through all of this, but I'll summarize. Point one is really about adjusting the height to 12 feet and increasing the total height to 36 feet. I think in general, this might have some merit, but we wouldn't want to do this only for the CB Light zone. This is something that I think I'm going to put on our to-do list for things that we would want to take a look at across zones and across our zoning. We've come up with a few of these things in our discussions around this. So that's one I'm going to put on the list for things in the future. And not, I think it would be detrimental to just do it in the zone. Parking requirements. Oh, also for the FAR. Part of the reason we are not adjusting things too much on the FAR is because we also have the SEOD overlay which does allow for a little bit more flexibility. It allows flexibility both by right and a little bit more flexibility by special permit. So we, that was one of the discussion points. Number two, the parking. Those dimensional requirements are noted for the building. But we do have parking buffer requirements in 195-43 for parking areas that abut residential. And we are proposing a decent buffer on that. We also in 195-44 have landscaping buffer requirements based on the number of spaces. So the larger the lot, the more buffer there needs to be. One foot of buffer per space with a minimum of 10 feet. So we do have some built-in buffering there. For number three, the parking lot lighting and landscape, landscaping and groundwater protection. The concerns raised here and in number four for traffic are not zoning specific, they're project specific. So these are the types of concerns that we would look at when any specific project is raised to us. These are not things that we can necessarily mitigate in zoning.
Well, they're valid.
Certainly valid.
Valid, yes, certainly valid.
Valid concerns.
But we have to address it during the site review, not in the zoning.
If there are any current issues with the current properties, those would be raised by the appropriate inspectional groups, the Board of Health and the Building Commissioner. Same thing with traffic. And then in number five, the clarification there is that in the hypothetical situation, in the first one where you have two non-contiguous lots, it's really, the FAR is applied to each lot. And if they're contiguous lots, then it's likely that there would be an A and R provided to combine the lots to make one lot with a different FAR calculation. So I did want to address those specific concerns that were raised to us in the letter. Alright.
And then the surplus building coverage and our FAR of the larger lot could not be applied?
It cannot be applied. It's lot-specific.
What's the maximum stories right now in CB Light?
Three.
Okay.
If I remember correctly. Okay. Did I cover all of that? Okay. Alright. So we will, at this point, open it up to the public for comment.
Uh-oh.
Good evening. Ann Sobuleski from Prince Labele on behalf of Lockheed Martin. I did submit an email to the board, but I was only able to do that today. So I just wanted to very briefly give you some information.
Could you adjust the microphone a little bit? I'm having a hard time.
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thanks. So at the last public hearing on the zoning, there were a number of issues that were raised. And we just wanted to make sure we proactively took the time to respond to them so that the board was aware of what we had done and to, you know, continue to demonstrate our commitment to be a good neighbor in the neighborhood. So a number of issues were raised to just very briefly mention. Someone mentioned lighting. So after the meeting, there was a nighttime walk taken around the neighborhood to see if there was any lighting that was visible. We identified a couple of lights that might potentially be a problem, but to be more proactive than that, we took all of the lighting on the back of the building and converted it to downlighting. So all of the lighting on the entire property is downlighting and it's LED to ensure that there isn't any light trespass off the property. There had been a second comment made about noise. And again, we took a walk around the neighborhood. The, the building itself is not really geographically proximate to the rest of the neighborhood. There's that big space and wetland area behind it, and then there are the other properties along the side. We did walk around. We didn't observe any audible noise. But there are two blowers that exist on the building, again, in an area that is not proximate to the neighborhood, but they exist. So we proactively are in the process. We've hired someone, the process is being performed right now, to create additional shields for those blowers to ensure that there's absolutely no possibility of any noise escaping from the property. An issue was raised with respect to air emissions. We are fully air emission compliant. We're ISO 14001 compliant, which ensures proactive steps being taken on a constant basis to be more environmentally cognizant and friendly as a company. So I did want to respond to that. And then last thing, people were concerned about Hart Pond. And as, as I would note, you know, again, the pond is a value add for our employees. They like it. They enjoy going there, taking time on their lunch breaks and walking around. We value the pond as well. And we are stormwater compliant and any future project that would occur would also be 100% stormwater compliant. So we just wanted to make sure you were aware. Also, we are planning another meeting with the community. We're in the process of setting that up. We just didn't have time to do that between the last meeting and this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we will make sure to attach that letter to our agenda link as well for the next meeting, so that people have that letter available. Okay, are there any other public comments on the CB Light zoning or Kate's Corner zoning? Come right up. Yes?
I'm back. I'm Bob Laporte, and I want to say something positive about this proposed zoning change. And I have seen a lot of good things about it. But a little bit about myself. I was born and raised in Chelmsford before Route 3 and 495. And so I've seen a lot of changes. And my great-grandfather bought some land on Parkerville Road where I now live. So my whole life, I've spent on and off Parkerville Road. So I'm going to speak also with my real estate career. I was in commercial real estate. I was a counselor of real estate. I was managing director of the valuation and counseling group of a major Boston real estate company. And I've had a lot of familiarity looking at impacts of proposed zoning changes or developments in regards to valuations. So I spent a lot of time with that. So in that light, I want to say that I think this proposed zoning change is a good one. I think there are a lot of positive issues about it, and it goes to one, we're decreasing the industrial and commercial land area and increasing the residential land area through the proposed zoning district changes. I think that's good because this is primarily, with the exception of Lockheed Martin, the residential area with a school and a lot of open space. So I think the fact that at the end of the day, we have more residential open space land than before is a good thing. And I think there are positive changes in the proposed dimensional requirements. Having to do with story heights and maximum building coverage ratios and setbacks to the residential districts. I think those are all positive things that help preserve the residential character of the neighborhood. And I think they're important. The other thing I've done in the last day is take a look at uses. So, and you know, I kind of focused on the Maxwell property and proposed uses that would be permitted today versus in the proposed changes. And I think it's important to note that, you know, you could have a used car lot on the Maxwell property as an allowed use. And you could have a self-storage facility as an allowed use. I don't think those would be compatible with what I think the goal is here, to have those kind of kind of uses. And also, on the Lockheed Martin property, it excludes what's allowed today, warehousing and distribution. So I think that is a positive change that would help the neighborhood. So all in all, when you look at, you know, the amount of land that will kind of return to residential, and you look at the change in the dimensional regulations that kind of favor the residential character of the neighborhood, and, you know, have some clarity on uses that are more appropriate for that location, I think it's all good. And I think I commend the board for, you know, doing this. And I think it's going to help the neighborhood. And if Lockheed Martin expands, I think it would, you know, they've been a good neighbor to the neighborhood. So I, I'm speaking in favor of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will you come to town meeting? Speaking of that, too. They're the ones who make the decisions.
No, seriously, will you come to town meeting?
I was waiting for a but.
Thank you.
I kind of was, too.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion to continue.
You want to continue or close?
I think we need to continue this. Evan, what is the date that we need to close this out?
Let me just take a quick look. I think you'll be able to close this out on your September 10th meeting.
Okay.
Certainly no later than that.
I thought that they were signing the...
I think the select board, I think it's the, either the 15th or the 22nd. I believe it's the 15th.
Part of the reason why I want to try and keep this open as much as we can, just in case we find something else in our discussions on the 51-55 Middlesex Street that might cause us to change things. I wouldn't want to have to be open and re-advertise and so...
In that case, I will move to continue until our next meeting.
August 13th?
August 13th, I guess.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Anita. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It is continued.
Nice.
And I expect that as we go along, each session will get shorter and shorter.
Yeah.
I hope. All right. Next up on the agenda, 51-55 Middlesex Street and 70 Princeton Street, the landing at Chelmsford Mills. This is a continued public discussion to also apply or consider applying this zoning to that area with specific properties. We have also attached to the agenda an email from Alex, the Development. And also, I did want to mention that I did present this to the Vinyl Square Committee on Monday, received really good feedback. They liked it. They thought it was a great idea. They liked the parcels that we were proposing to change. They had some recommendations for outreach to the neighbors. I'm going to start working with Evan on that outreach after this meeting this week to start getting a little bit more of the neighborhood involved like we did with Kate's Corner. And then we'll continue that informal discussion.
You know, you say you have a job at Harvard Business School, but I don't believe that. This is your full-time job.
No, it really isn't. All right. All right, are there any comments from the board before we open it up to the public?
I just want to thank you guys for waiting.
Yeah.
We really appreciate what you do, sitting here all night, going through all this.
Yeah, but we signed up for it.
Indeed.
All right.
I think we're pretty, you were homing in on it quite nicely.
Okay. All right. Open it up for the public.
Yeah, hi, I'm Joe Freeman. We own and operate 51-55 Middlesex, the landing at Chelmsford Mills. We, we love the building. Community's been great. We're really not even here on our behalf tonight, but Chris, I'll say, very much in favor of the rezoning from IA to CBLT. We think it's appropriate, kind of for this day and age and what that property is. We originally thought we were going to be on the town meeting for October. And we know, we can see, you guys have a lot on your plate. You're dealing with a lot of things, sort of probably looking at a lot of different sections of town. And that's really fine for, for us. However, we've got two tenants. They're very small. They're 300, 400 square feet. These are entrepreneurial women. One's been in there operating prior to this. She's got a, sort of a spa, medical spa-type business. We've got another that's a hairdresser. And both of these businesses, they're small. They don't represent a lot of rent to us, as you can imagine. They're 300, 400 square feet. But these people have their life savings into these businesses, and I feel terrible every time I talk to them. We haven't charged them any rent. We've told them, do not pay rent. You know, we're going to talk with the town. Evan's been fantastic. Jose's been great for us to work with. But we really would like to find either some way to keep our property on for the October town meeting, and if that's not possible, to find some way to allow these women to operate these businesses temporarily until we get to that spring meeting. I'm a lawyer from a past life, so forgive me, but I, you know, we could have a non-conforming pre-existing use for one of them. We could, it could be some sort of special permit, some sort of temporary C of O. Again, these are sort of one-room businesses that these women operate, and I just, it breaks my heart to tell them. It probably doesn't represent $1,000 in rent a month to us, but to them, it's, it's everything. So I ask the board if there's any way you can help these women with that. And we certainly support, Chris, to what you were saying earlier from going to IA to CBLT. We think it'll be great for us and for Vinyl Square. And we welcome, you know, meeting with the neighbors or whatever you think's appropriate. And we will come to town meeting and say something positive.
Yeah, we'll meet this.
Okay. Before we address and discuss that one, are there any other public wishing to comment? Yes.
My name is Ralph Block, 2 Edwards Place, directly across the street from your building. Great, maybe not so great. But a couple of concerns. First and foremost, a concern from the past that still seems to exist is light pollution from, from the parking area. There's nothing like the sound of a beating drum at 2:00 AM. And the practice rooms operate well after 11:00 PM.
They're musicians.
So to get, to get the change to CB light, fine. But hours of operation. Signage. In the past, flat, non-illuminated signage has been the way it's always gone. CrossFit insists on having that internally lit sign. He's changed it so that it, it isn't on 24/7 anymore, but it's still on. It doesn't go with the character of the building. You guys have done a great job with the flowers and the plantings and all that stuff. The building is in great shape.
Thank you.
All right. Another issue is large truck access. The corner of my lot takes a beating every time a 53-foot trailer tries to back into the loading dock for, the covered dock for velocity. It's better since you've taken the corner off of that granite wall.
That was the thought with that, yeah.
They don't climb up on my lawn anymore.
Yep.
But it's an issue. Let me just scan my notes here. I don't want to miss anything. The, the mill, the mill building, you have an easement that runs between 2 Edwards Place and 54 Middlesex. My concern is, with the change in zoning, will there be any effect on that easement? I don't want to get up some morning and find a tractor trailer parked in my neighbor's driveway. It's a shared easement, eight feet on his side and eight feet on mine. If I'm going to change the zoning, what I'd really like to see happen is extinguish the easement. That easement runs from Middlesex Street all the way down to the river, through the middle of the parking lot from the condos behind us, across the railroad tracks, and then down to the, the other mill building down off of Wooton Street. So it's, it's a lengthy easement. It's 16 feet wide.
Do you know, can I ask, do you know what the easement's specifically for?
I assume that it was, it was granted, it was actually granted from the, one of the former owners of our property. Marie something, Marie, I can't remember her last name. Tetley? But it shows up on the deed for 54 Middlesex and for 2 Edwards. I'd like to see that go away. Just, I don't know if you can extinguish it all the way down to the river, right?
Off the top of my head, I'm not familiar with it, but I'd be happy to take a look at it and see what it is.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
Evan, do you have any idea what that might be for?
I think what it was for originally was to transport goods from your mill building down to the other mill building that's down by the boat ramp.
Or down to the river.
Or down to the river.
Right.
And I think that's why it was there.
Does anybody use it?
No.
Have you ever seen anybody use it? So we'll consider it. We'll take a look at it. Yeah.
From a zoning, from a zoning perspective, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I would think that that easement for an IA use would be more detrimental than if we changed it to the CB light. I would think that it'd be less impactful for you when we do change it. But I agree that if no one's using it, but that, I don't, I think that's a separate issue from the, the zoning changes that we're proposing.
Yeah, that, that easement, I don't believe, has been used. I want to see, was it the Dixons that owned 54 Middlesex? I think the Dixon family.
My guess is it was probably, if, it's probably an industrial use type of easement.
That's what I'm thinking.
And if we change the zoning, I think the uses of that easement would probably be pretty negligible or go away. But I would encourage the two of you to seek legal counsel to look at extinguishing that.
Altogether.
I mean, the town is not a party to that easement.
And my comment was, yeah, my comment was more of a question than a comment, really. I don't know what effect it will have, but I don't want it to have any effect. Lighting, we've already touched on that. The right-of-way, we've touched on that. Lighting. You got any else? I'm done.
All right, thank you. So I appreciate you bringing all these concerns forward. Most of them are based on current uses and current signs. My recommendation is for the two of you to get together, see if you can work out resolutions to these. If not, if it's still not to your satisfaction, bring these to the Building Commissioner attention, and he can look to see if it violates any bylaws or anything like that.
Okay.
But it sounds like the kinds of things you mentioned are actually going to become more, become less of an issue by going from industrial to CB light.
I think a lot of my question comes from the fact that I'm really not clear on what CB light is going to allow. You know?
Yeah, we have a slide.
Am I, am I going to end up with a go-kart track going between my property and somebody else's, you know? Or is it going to be a salon where people just go in and have their hair done? I don't do that.
Yeah.
Evan, that would be helpful.
You know, what, what's the bottom line?
So our goal when we were putting the zoning together was to take the, there are some really least, less impactful uses in the IA district, like cottage industry type of manufacturing, like the small, the small types of furniture manufacturing and things like that. There's also commercial uses in the CB district and the CA district that are not impactful to small neighborhoods. So we took all of those uses, put them together in the CB light district so that it provides a lot of flexibility for commercial uses that is not impactful for the neighborhoods. Certainly much less impactful than industrial uses like warehouses and self-storage facilities and things like that.
Do we have, is it in this slide? Evan?
Yeah.
Can you page down? So you can go and see what is actually allowed if you page down on our agenda. Oh, sorry, wrong one. See this chart right here? So if you go to our agenda, and Evan, we can show you where the link is, but we have this all listed in this slide presentation.
I guess I didn't know that existed.
Yeah, so you'll see what's in IA, what's allowed in IA, and what we're allowing in CB. So it's like, for example, I can't even see the first one. It's...
First and mobile.
Okay, so that's like, it's a no in CB.
But it goes through all the uses that we allow in town in the districts. And then you can see and compare the uses in the different districts and then what we're proposing in our new district.
She had some copies. You can have it.
Oh, awesome. Thank you. You're welcome. Appreciate that. And then the only, the only other thing that I had, you talked about limiting the number of stories allowable in a building. You're going to have to cut them some slack because you got a four-story building.
No, well, it's already there.
Yeah, they're going to be...
Starting warming.
And, and the last, the last issue is the vacant lot that's across the street from Brick House Pizza. I'm not sure what the intended use is for that.
We don't own that, so we didn't take, we didn't buy that.
Oh, you didn't buy that with the mill?
I around it, Stone Lovin' Pizza. The Alice...
Where is that lot, Evan?
It's across from Stone Lovin' Pizza. It's on the other side of Middlesex from our driveway.
Yeah, right across the street from Brick House.
Yeah.
So that one's...
It actually, Stony, Stony Brook actually runs through that property.
Isn't the railway one?
That property is actually currently zoned IA, and that's one of the ones that we're proposing to switch to the CB light.
That actually should be sacred ground. My understanding is that that was the site of the original mill building that burned. And the stonework where Stony Brook flows through that property is actually the foundation or the remnants of the foundation from the original mill building.
Better go down there and take a look.
So that would probably be under the jurisdiction of... So that would probably be under the jurisdiction of the historical commission. So any, any development that would have, that would be proposed for that lot would probably have to go through the historic.
Well, and you can't, you can't get far enough away from Stony Brook to, to dig a hole.
Right.
Anyway, thanks for your time.
Alright, going back to the other topic of timing. I actually don't, and there, I don't think there's any way that we could get this to town meeting. Given the fact that some are, given the fact that we still have to officially open up a, um, public hearing for this. And we also wanted to follow the same process that we did with Gates Corner.
And I think, like, it's already a big ask to get, we first have to get CB Light passed at town meeting. And I think if we go in there, I think that's the biggest piece.
Maybe we could ask the council if there's anything we could do.
I think we've exhausted all, all options. Um, I know we had council involved, I believe we looked at the pre-existing non-conformity, but I want to circle back with Jose on that. You have to understand this, the engagement with the property owner on these two, um, tenants dates back maybe April? And then he appeared before you around that same time. And we just assumed, I think collectively, we assumed that it was going to be heading to fall town meeting. So that was, I think collectively, we said, well, six months out, it will self-resolve. And now it's becoming clear that it's not going to resolve itself. But I'll circle back with Jose and revisit the, uh, the pre-existing non-conformity, maybe one of them can be solved.
The other one that I was looking at, and I know I've talked to you about this, Evan. The, the one that has the medispaw component to it. If that can be classified as a medi, a true medispaw that has a medical component. It's possible it could be classified as a medical clinic and that is allowed in IA. So I guess that depends on, A, is it licensed enough from the state to be an official medispaw? And if it is, how much of that business, I guess, would be that medical component? Because I know that, that there are some licensing requirements for medispas. Where doctors and, and medical professionals do have to be involved. So if there's enough of it, maybe it could be classified as a medical clinic.
I wouldn't be surprised, but we have a little bit of leeway there. Interpretive leeway, not ours really, but of the.
There would be essentially Jose's and then ZBA as an appeal.
If they see no issue, if they, if they find that argument plausible, I don't think anybody's going to stop me.
So those are the only options that I could see.
And as a property owner, I do recommend coming to town meeting to help us pass CB Light. We need all the help we can get.
Yeah, we do.
Alright, are there any other questions, comments, ideas?
Maybe get your tenants too.
Yes. Get your tenants.
Alright, um, we don't need a. I don't think we need an official motion for that one, um, since it's just an informal public discussion. Alright, so moving on to the next agenda item, the annual town, thank you everyone, uh, the annual town report. We have been asked to pull together information for FY twenty-five, um, report by August thirteenth. The fiscal year for the town runs. Okay. So, my idea is that if you can think of things that we've done in this fiscal year. Evan included, uh, last year's, uh, on the agenda as an example. If you want to send them to me, I can work with Evan to compile them and submit them, uh, by the thirteenth. So if you can get them to me by.
That's a lot of stuff you're doing.
Compiling information's pretty easy.
I'm not volunteering or anything.
Compiling information's pretty easy. So if you could get it to me. By the. Next meeting is the thirteenth, it's due on the thirteenth, uh, maybe by the thirty-first of July? They'll give me that weekend to work on compiling it. And I can submit it pretty quickly. Okay. Please, um, I'm hoping I can get some input from everyone. Even one idea would be good, uh, so I don't have to do it all myself.
It just has to show what, what you did the past year from June to June.
Yes, accomplishments from the board.
These are agendas.
Can't you just take all of the minutes and throw it into?
I'm actually considering trying some chat GPT stuff.
Copilot's really good.
It's usually a two or three pager, right Evan? I mean, you're not looking, you don't want to submit like.
You can dump documents in and tell it to.
I've, I've not had good luck with Copilot, so I like chat GPT.
They took chat GPT away, GPT away from us.
Yes, they took it away from us too. Oh, we don't, we don't have that, I don't have anything.
I was planning on trying some of that as well. Let's see what it does.
So it's June, June, what is the dates?
July first through June thirtieth. July first of twenty-four through June thirtieth of twenty-five.
I want to give you good, um, background on what we are up to before you joined.
Yeah. There's one project.
I didn't see pallet drive on that list.
Alright, so managed growth strategy.
Looks like funding on the way, potentially.
We won't know until October.
Yeah, we won't know till October. What I'd like to do is get, um, so we talked about two planning board, one, um, select board, one twenty-twenty master plan, two strategic plan, two town meeting reps and one, uh, concom. What I'd like to do is get two people from the planning board, uh, to volunteer for that.
Well, I've been on enough of the committees that you mentioned. That probably makes sense. A master plan and, you know, strategic plan.
Okay.
So I'm willing.
Would anyone else be willing to volunteer?
I'm against growth, so I'm the wrong person to go on that one.
Well, I mean, depends which, which, what you focus on, managed.
Yeah, I would, I probably shouldn't be on that one.
Well, I think if you, I'm not sure my, my, the time I'll have available, but I am working on the finance piece. So I'm hoping to lay out why, and again, I'm not for build baby build, I don't think the town can support that. But I am going to try to lay out in numbers why, and show why some modest level of growth is healthy for the town.
Well, and if we, if we think about like what Paul said when he was talking, I mean, growth happens. It's, it's undeniable, so we want to drive it.
Yeah, so we'd be looking at this group, so this board would be the, the, essentially the steering committee for this task force. We'd be looking to this, uh, task force to, um, make sure that, that we have good goals for the, um, development of the, uh, the plan for, uh, selecting the consultant once the grant application is done. So doing things like that and then working with the consultant to develop the plan. Okay, um, so.
We've got Mike and who?
Mike and John? Everyone okay with that? So what I'm also going to do is I'm going to email the reps, the, uh, town reps and the chairs to get volunteers for the rest of it. Evan, how do we normally handle the citizen component?
So any of the non-committee, uh, designees, uh, so town meeting reps and residents, we usually put out a, uh, a call for interest. Ask them to send an email to, uh, someone expressing interest. And then if there's more than, uh, you know, more than two people that show interest. Historically, there's been, you know, an invitation to appear or some sort of engagement uh, for the, uh, for the planning board to assess who they want to appoint.
So could it go on the select board committee vacancy agenda and, or that?
It could, um, my suggestion, the way we've normally handled it is the planning board will, will put a news flash up on the town website. You can do a direct mailing to the town meeting reps. And then the select board will announce it and the planning board can announce it as well.
Okay, yeah, why don't we do that? I can, I can send out an, uh.
Yeah, just keep me updated on your timing. That way we can coordinate the, the, kind of the deadline for the, with the citizen and town meeting rep.
Yep, okay, I'll work with you this week in getting that.
Alright, and just keep in mind, August is a really tough month to engage.
I know. We'd likely be not till September. We gather the names and then probably in one of our September meetings, probably the second September meeting, um, finalize the, the names. Who, for this two strategic plan and the twenty-twenty master plan, who would I contact to get those?
I'll give those to you.
Okay.
Yeah, just send me an email.
Okay. Alright. Anything else on that topic before we move on?
Just the, the housing production plan, I thought it had a lot of information that was very interesting and useful, so. I think we should definitely, um, consider that.
Yep. Alright, uh, next item is the Northern Star Village Development Update. Evan, do you have?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll give a very brief, uh, overview, just looking at the time here. As you recall, this is a definitive subdivision, twelve duplexes. Uh, the last time this, the board was engaged with this was a bond establishment, DPW provided a letter. So at this point, the town is holding a bond in the amount of three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. All units are occupied and that money, uh, is intended to cover any, any and all, um, items at the time of establishment, uh, for completion. So at this point, you have, uh, twenty-four duplexes occupied with tax-paying residents. You have a developer who, uh, is still, um, doing a punch list of items, working with DPW and their project engineer. If you recall, that road was intended to be, um, town-approved. That requires a planning board action, select board action and town meeting action. And there's contemplation of a homeowners association. So the residents, as, as indicated in the letter here, have been engaging with town hall and DPW for quite some time on a variety of issues. There are, there are pro- private properties that have interest in making modifications to private property related to improved drainage or what they see as improved drainage. Uh, and then they have, uh, interest in getting the homeowners association up and running sooner rather than later. Uh, they have questions about, uh, the timing of when, uh, the roadway will go in front of town meeting. And DPW and I have basically told them that there's not much that we can do other than, um, engaging with the developer and, and asking, you know, for, for updates. So at this point, my suggestion would be, uh, that if the board is inclined, put this on, uh, an agenda. Formally as an agenda item, uh, we're, 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 uh, doing a project update. That project update will primarily come from DPW. And I would also suggest that we do a direct, um, invite notification to the, uh, twenty-four households as well as the developer. That at least provides a forum for the board to, uh, receive an update and ask some questions. Maybe it facilitates and expedites, um, you know, some, some resolution to this. There's, there's not a lot that the planning board can do, uh, we hold a bond. I don't believe the bond had a, um, had a time to act on it. And it, it's not really clear to me the extent of the, the issues. I think DPW and the project engineer probably have the best handle on the issues. But the, the simplest way to say is you, you have twenty-four households in Chums Ridge that aren't, aren't, they're not really sure what's going on. And we're not able to give them the answers that they're looking for.
So essentially, we'd be providing the forum for them to get answers from DPW and developer.
Yeah, that's the intent, and again, if the developer was willing to engage, I think that would be beneficial. Depending upon that forum, the, you know, the board, the board has the legal right to initiate calling the bond, meaning taking the bond. Uh, there's, there's a variety of complexities related to that, uh, particularly with, with the kind of, the status of this project. But even that's difficult to figure out because I just don't have all the details as to what's the punch list, what's the remaining items, what's the cost? To what extent would DPW, uh, be interested in managing the completion of the work? So there's a variety of stakeholders and, and interests.
Is that something we should have town council at as well?
I can ask them what their opinion is on it. Let me start with that and see what they.
So this is money the developer would like back, but isn't doing anything.
The developer is entitled to any money, um, that's left over. And so that's a developer's interest. The developer is likely, likely entitled to receive a significant portion of that money back.
Once they do their punch.
The developer may need a bond reduction in order to do the remaining work. So, uh, there's also, again, there's a lot of moving parts and it's not clear to me how we, we collectively, developer, working with the planning board, take the next logical steps towards getting this, this project closed out.
Does this never happen before?
In, in varying degrees, um, this project has been, um, it's been plagued with a variety of manag- management-related construction issues, which is, which is not typical for Chums Ridge.
I mean, it seems like if we gave them their money, how would we know they're going to spend it on that?
Oh, no, we wouldn't give it back till after it's done.
So there's a variety of issues, all of my, all my interest at this point was to get it formally on a planning board agenda, I think that's the pro- the proper forum.
So I would like to request then that town council be there so that we can figure out next steps, um, once that forum is provided. Because I don't think that.
Yeah, it's not unreasonable, I just, I don't know to what extent, um, there'll be any, any actionable, you know, item that council can, uh, can recommend, but it's worthwhile likely to have council there.
Can we target putting this on one of the September meetings? Depending on town council's availability?
Yep.
Okay, uh, next item, uh, MBTA district, we. Next item, MBTA district, we did receive the compliance confirmation letter. So we are fully compliant on the MBTA law. So I wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that. Master plan implementation updates. I have actually gone through this and have some recommended updates. So on two dot one. The MBTA portion is completed.
Yep, we did that.
The SEAD is planned and the CBLT is in process. So I think those three bullets can be added to the notes for two point one.
Are you able to send me your markups?
I will.
Yeah, okay, and you'll, and you'll bring them to the meeting?
Two point five is in process, that is the CB light to fall town meeting. The two point seven, the planning board decision to not modify the bylaw and to no longer accept Pilo for anything other than fractional units, based on my recollection of that discussion. Two point ten is planned after the managed growth strategy is determined. And then four point three, we did increase the fees as of October twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Okay, that'll, that'll help us out.
That Pilo thing, do we need to modify our regulation or anything?
No, that's just a, that's our whim.
Just.
It's what we feel like.
Well, I mean, honestly, I think in, in the event that we're not the people making that decision in the future, it maybe we should put it into our. I don't know where.
No, the, the other group could change their mind and do it the different way.
It would have to go into regulations and that will require a process.
I, I would like it to be, personally, I would like it to be institutionalized.
Wouldn't be bad.
You can change the by, the zoning bylaw to not allow a Pilo. You have that, you have that choice.
Only for fractional units.
You can revise it however you.
Yeah.
Want to revise it, or you can just keep it as, as a policy.
I mean, it's.
Is it a, it's a policy now, it's, it's written somewhere, right?
This fractional thing, my understanding is the last time the board had this discussion, they basically said they were not going to consider Pilos any longer, they wanted the units built.
Right.
The bylaw, the zoning bylaw as drafted provides both options. When developers meet with us, we tell them the board's, the board's policy, the board's preference.
Okay.
But we did discuss.
Unwritten policy.
Allowing it for the fractional.
I think we should, I think we should document it as a policy. I mean, it should be documented.
Yeah, you can do what passports have done and you just vote a policy and you just have your policy.
Evan always liked to keep everything flexible, but I don't like this to be flexible.
Yeah, no, it's clear to me that how the board feels.
Current board definitely feels this way.
I just think it should be documented, even if it's in a policy that could be changed by a later board.
All right, I will add it to our to-do list of changes.
That's good, thank you. Thank you.
For future, not anytime soon because we do have a pretty big to-do list. As long as we don't have any more state mandates coming. All right, next meeting dates. We will, we'll have the August thirteenth and I think based on what I'm hearing, we're still considering not doing the August twenty-seventh meeting.
Well, I bought tickets to James Taylor.
So at this point, I would like to propose that we not do the August twenty-seventh meeting and take it off the calendar.
Yeah, let's take it up.
All right.
I've got stuff then too that's gonna come.
So we will take that off the calendar, we will not meet on the twenty-seventh, we will meet on October, on August thirteenth. And at that, I think we're done, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mike, second by Anita, all in favor?
Aye.
Adieu, everyone.